It's on now. Let's call this meeting to order, the Pickle City Commission meeting, Tuesday, July 16th. We'll begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Homan.
Here.
Commissioner Vedder.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner DeBros.
Here.
First on our agenda is a presentation from the Commissioners Committee on Fire Training.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those that don't know me, I am David Roth, co-chair of the Commissioners Committee for the fire training facility. It was a productive previous month. We obviously had the Fourth of July to take off, so we didn't have as much time as other months, but we were still productive. I want to say thank you to the city manager, Paul Obadorfer, for responding to our questions that we submitted in writing. We're digesting those responses and working on follow-up questions, and we'll get those out as soon as we can. The primary reason we wanted, the primary issue we wanted to talk about this evening was regarding legal counsel for the committee. Basically, since the formation of this committee and in our initial meetings, we've had questions that, questions surrounding our procedural, procedural issues that we've had, just questions around the sunshine laws and things of that nature that we would like answers on. Now, Mr. Patrizio is our liaison and is the city law director, and he's been helpful to us, but the committee would like to reach out to independent counsel just to get a follow-up opinion on some legal matters. So, the committee over the last month, probably one of our biggest focuses, maybe the biggest focus, has been in the process of looking for outside counsel. And every member of the committee has, you know, reached out to maybe someone they know or, you know, Dayton Bar Association, Dayton Law School, just different legal entities to help with that search. The fire, there are several reasons why we're searching for outside counsel. To name a few of them, we would like to have counsel provide the members of the committee advice on avoiding liability when we discuss individuals or entities during our public meetings. We would like to have counsel provide the committee advice regarding the sunshine laws, specifically questions about having executive sessions or being able to meet and have work sessions where we can actually dig into the material together and talk about anything we need to talk about, anyone we need to talk about, without fears of discouraging people from maybe wanting to be interviewed or likewise protecting the committee members from issues with liability. We would also like counsel to assist in the committee's efforts to make FOIA requests and schedule interviews, perform legal research on various issues that might come before the committee, and assist the committee in its efforts to draft a final report and maybe provide a review of the final report before we submit it to the commissioners. So as I mentioned, members of the committee sought various options and we were, we narrowed it down to two individuals, two firms. The first is Dan Brown of the Brown Law Office in Dayton, Ohio. I submitted his engagement letter to all of you earlier this, like, last week. His rate is $300 an hour. He's located in Dayton, Ohio, and he's very qualified, as you can see from the resume. The other individual that we reached out to or that discussed, had discussions with our committee was Tim Burke of the Office of Manley Burke located in Cincinnati, Ohio. Tim's rate was $350 an hour, and at the last minute, Tim thought, well, because of the distance between here and Cincinnati and the rate, maybe he wouldn't be the best fit, so he pulled his name out of the hat. We presented this, this past Thursday at the commissioner, or committee's meeting, and we took a vote, and the committee was unanimous. We wanted to recommend Mr. Brown to the city commission to approve for outside counsel for the committee. So, I guess the question...
The question is whether or not, okay, within the scope, I guess. I mean, how many hours are you, how many billable hours are we, as our citizens, for?
Yeah, so the committee talked about this, and we thought maybe we could start with five hours, which would be, you know, five hours.
What do you guys think?
Five hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the five hours would be for a period of?
It would really just be as needed.
As needed, yeah.
If we need to reach out to the attorney, have a question. Now, I will say that initially, we may go through five hours.
Quick.
Quick.
Oh, sure.
Just because of the fact that to bring him up to speed as to everything that's going on.
Do, um, are you anticipating your need of him to be, or as he, did he discuss whether or not virtual was an option, you know, doing phone calls and emails as consuming the billable hours so that those hours aren't being consumed with travel time up 75?
We didn't talk about virtual, but to start, I'm thinking email, phone calls would suffice.
Okay.
And if there's, you know, a need, I can't right now think of a need for him to come up, but, I mean, I guess...
You're not being unreasonable.
...initial meeting in person.
Not being unreasonable, so...
Okay.
And you can come back with your monthly report and head tab us where you are with the five hours.
And say you need more, just let us know.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, um, I've, I've had some conversations with your whole committee, but I, you know, some of this discussion was from some ideas or suggestions that I'd had. I think five hours at a time is probably a good rate, you know, see, see where you need them at. If you use them fast, we'll see how, you know, what did you use them on? Was that a good use of the city's funds? You know, if it's, if it seems like it's going in the right direction, we'll, we'll continue on with that. And then, I, I think I've made this clear with, with your committee as well, but just for the, the general public, the way that we're imagining this being structured is that the city commission, us, we have the authority to get a second or outside legal counsel outside of Mr. Patrizio. And so, your lawyer, Mr. Brown here, if we do go forward with this, he would end up being really the commissions, the commission would be his client. We would designate your fire committee as the proxy, and that way, you know, we can make it clear from the commission how those, how the dollars are being spent, what the scope is, and just keep some oversight over that to make sure that the, the city's funds are being used in, in the correct way. But I'm looking through the CV here, I, I think he's got some of the background that I think is going to help you out with some things. I think that there's a lot of open questions about, you know, what, what was supposed to happen out there, what, what documents were supposed to be filed, and it seems like, well, it seems like maybe they should have done certain things, but did they really have to? Or really, should they have done them in a different way? I think that Mr. Brown's background from a legal perspective, compliance, and especially with EPA and environmental things, I think he's trying to be able to give some clarity to some of those open questions or where things maybe feel like they should have gone a certain way. I think he's be able to know for sure which way they were supposed to go.
Do you guys have anything else?
That was really it. That was the big topic for the night.
Oh, well, we appreciate it, and thank you for, for coming and volunteering.
Can, can we know what next steps would be?
Yeah, so, um, we would need to see this as, I'm not sure if we would need an ordinance to move around the money or not, but...
Nope.
Resolution.
Really, the contract needs to be sent up, and, and actually, the city manager can sign the contract.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I think that's where we'll, we'll kind of keep track of that.
Let Paul handle that portion of it.
So I just need to get a contract?
Mm-hmm.
Submit it to Paul.
As ASAP.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, just, I, I had mentioned something at the last fire committee meeting, and I think I said a few things to a few of the commissioners up here, but Mr. Obadorfer, my recommendation would be that the initial contract be for the five hours for them plus another hour for the commission to meet with, who essentially is, you know, we would be the client, meet with him in an executive session, go over, you know, kind of a little bit of what our goals were for the, the committee, and scope out what we were hoping he could accomplish with the, the fire committee, and when they can have the remainder, five hours would be my recommendation.
Would he be present at that first hour?
That would be up to the rest of the commission. I believe that that would end up being an executive session likely.
Executive session.
Um, not to say that you're specifically uninvited, but you would have to be invited.
Will we?
Good question.
That's something we'll have to talk about.
We'll have to discuss that.
Alternatively, maybe, so when I ask for the contract, it should be for six hours, you're saying? Or...
Yeah, I guess, if it's, if he wants the one hour and then five for...
Mr. Obadorfer, would it make more sense maybe for you just to contact this law firm and, and work through that?
Frank and I will be, we can get the agreement put together.
Okay, so I, that has now been delegated to Mr. Obadorfer, so you don't have to worry about it.
Who would be inviting us?
The commission.
Because I think there might be some issues if we don't get that invitation.
Or maybe alternatively, if, if the commission met with the attorney for an hour and then maybe have another hour for the committee to meet?
Well, um, can you elaborate on some of the issues? If, if the commission were to meet with the lawyer in executive session, what would be some of the issues if you weren't present for that?
Say that again.
Can you elaborate on what some, some of the issues might be if you weren't invited to that meeting for the first hour?
Well, it looks like it's not our lawyer. It looks like it's your lawyer.
Well, and it, I...
Luckily, he is our lawyer.
And I'm not, I'm not hiding that, I'm not hiding the ball on that, it's, I'm just making that clear.
If, if he's not, more or less, our lawyer, then we might as well stay with Mr. Patrizio.
So, I, I know that there's kind of this us versus them mentality, but really, doesn't need to be, and there really isn't.
We are investigating.
You are...
The city, as well as other entities.
You are a committee, committee of the commission. We're all one team here. We're doing an internal investigation. It's, it's not, it's not this us versus them mentality. We, obviously, the commission, the commission has decided that there is something that needs to be figured out, that's why we formed the committee.
Right.
But I don't, I guess, are you, are you suggesting that we've got alternative motives in, in that, that we're working against you, or...
I think we need privacy with our lawyer. Mr. Obadorfer just sent an email yesterday, he used the word independent committee. We are an independent committee. We'd like to assert some of that independence.
I do understand, though, that...
You understand that?
The, the commission is paying for the attorneys.
Yeah, so that makes it...
Why would you want to meet him without us?
Well, as I, as I said, it would be our, this, and this isn't because we're trying to wrest independence from you, it's just the nature of how the city works and how the, the government's laid out and how the money has to be spent, because you are a city entity. If you weren't a city entity, you guys can, could do whatever you wanted, presumably, but because of the way the, the commission and the city government is formed, the lawyer would end up being the commission's lawyer, so it wouldn't really be your lawyer, it'd be our lawyer.
Then we'd all meet together.
Well, I mean, you guys are going to end up meeting with, so we're asking for an hour, and again, this isn't even saying that we wouldn't invite you, I mean, just if, if we didn't, but we would be having a single hour, you guys on our own, you guys would have five hours on your own, so I...
I think that should be a settled question before we go into a contract.
Then perhaps we should wait until then, I mean, the only option that we'd have to be, we'd have to discuss this and...
Can we do an executive session on that?
It's about a legal matter.
Yeah.
It's about contracts, actually, which would fall under executive session.
Mm-hmm. I got nothing to hide, I mean, I don't care if you're there or not, but, I mean, technically, it's the commission's lawyer.
Not regarding contractual issues, what you want to do with your committee.
You should be quite comfortable and supportive of us.
I just, I just said that, ma'am. I just said that.
But you ended it with...
It doesn't matter, it's still, it's still the commission's lawyer. It doesn't matter if you're there or not, it doesn't matter to me.
Can I ask again, what, what are your areas of concern if we met with them on their own?
We would like to have some privacy as an independent committee to meet with the lawyer that we have chosen to help us with the issues that David has outlined.
But since he paid, since the commission, the city pays for it, he's going to report back to us what you say, anyways.
So it's going to be one big happy thing?
Then that's fine, I have no problem with that.
And just so we're clear, the charter actually gives the law director, the lead, anybody who works for the city actually works under the law director, and he will not have the authority to issue subpoenas himself, so that would have to come through me or, or things of that nature. He can give advisory opinions to them, and I have no problem with that at all.
Do you want, are we going to do an executive session?
Can't do an executive session on...
Can't?
The decision is whether or not you're going to, to meet with him or not, it's not something that really is, is a contractual issue, it's just a decision that I think council has to make. If the commission wants to meet with them, I think they certainly can.
And they're invited.
That's correct.
You're invited.
All right, settled.
Thank you. Um, I have, I have some questions, actually, just about your progress. So you guys have been going for about three months now?
Correct.
Okay, so what, um, I guess, do you guys have any numbers on just, I guess, like, what, how much time have you guys been spending on this? Like, how many people have you talked to? How many documents have you collated? And then, do we, do we have any idea of kind of like a forecast of like how much longer you guys think you, you guys are looking? You guys looking at another six months, six years, seven days?
One question at a time.
Yeah, apologies.
You know, if I could, this has been, this has been a work in progress, you know, from the beginning, and we keep getting information and more information, and there's some things that are alleged, some, some citizens have some theories about some things, and, you know, I think part of our committee's job is to look into these and see if we've got some facts behind it and what's got legs and what doesn't, and try to see where we leak, go from here and make sense of some things. So, we thought we were kind of moving from the listening phase to investigation phase, which we are, but we had some more people show up and had some new details and new facts. So, we continue to get information, and then some people just are uncalled for coming forward, and now they're starting to come forward, so I can't tell you when we're going to stop having citizens come in with this or that, but we are, at the same time, listening. We are looking into everything and trying to grab what documents we can, and, you know, put the path forward. We're already starting to work on the outline for our final report, and, you know, it's just, some of the emails, some of the documents, they have names of people who used to work for the city or other names, and that's where the attorney comes in. We got to discuss these in a public forum, and because these are only theories and no facts, I don't want to put somebody's name out there.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's just a theory, and I don't want them to be charged unwillingly. So, to answer your question, we've, we put, you know, Nancy does a lot of, lot of, a lot more than the rest of us, because we all work, but I, I can tell you I put a number of hours in, I can't tell you how many, but, you know, we keep looking at things, but I will tell you, a lot of this stuff we've looked into, we're trying to put fact base on top of fact base until we get to a threshold where it either can move forward or it's just not there, and we're starting to get to a point where this just isn't there, and unless we get more, it's not going to go forward, but this seems to have something here, and we just got to keep building on it, so it's just a work in progress.
I think that's a great way of going about it, and I'm happy to hear that's, that's you guys' methodology, I think that's what we were hoping for.
Mm-hmm.
It does sound like there is progress being made, it's an unenviable task that you guys have been set forward with, so... Um, I have another question for the chair and the vice chair, it's similar to a question that I'd asked at your committee a few weeks ago. You guys had got the chance to tour the old water treatment plant where this event took place at, is there any, anything interesting or note that you guys wanted to talk about about from that?
I appreciate the city letting us go and take the tour. At this time, I don't have any thoughts on specifically what we saw, or...
Was, um, when you guys were out there, was there anywhere that you guys weren't allowed to go or not allowed to go see, or...
It was pretty much, we were shown a lot.
We saw almost everything. There's a small building north of the main plant building, sort of a two-story white building, we didn't go into that, but we didn't ask to either. Where the fire chief is currently keeping pallets and straw, we only stepped in briefly and, and backed out. Other than that, I think we saw pretty much everything. We didn't go to the burn building, but that, we've already had an open house.
Yeah. Um, I think you guys said Kevin Kearney was able to show you where like some of the swab testing was for some of the different chemical tests or contamination testing that was done, but did, was that helpful in kind of getting a lay of the land and where stuff was?
Lay of the land, I think, is key, but lay of the land and the water.
Yeah.
Of how the water flows and connects with the bigger bodies of water, how the drains work, how ESRG was using the chlorine building and how they had their technical stuff set up behind wind walls so that they could monitor the burns, and it just, all the terms that we've been learning, we could then lay a physical location to those.
You could put a picture to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then I asked you guys this question while, during the committee meeting, I'll ask it again for the public, were you guys, did you guys wear any protective equipment or breathing apparatus while you guys were out on that site?
We did, we probably should have.
We probably should have.
I did throw my sandals away after I heard the reaction of other people.
You guys think that you should have, though?
Looking back on it, I do, yeah.
Why, why do you say that?
Just, we went in the chlorine, the room that, where they did all the burning, and, I mean, you know, you smelled like, natural smells like chlorine or fluoride, I guess, but, um...
There's still unanswered questions.
It just makes you, it just makes you nervous, I guess, but...
Okay, um, but I guess you guys, you guys didn't think about that before you guys went out there? Uh, because we, I, the reason why I ask is because we've had a lot of claims about kind of how dangerous it is out there that I don't think that the testing that's been done so far supports. We've heard claims that there's animals dying out there, that it's too dangerous for the police and the firefighters to go out there and train, and then you guys had a chance to go out there, and, and theory, if some of this stuff is, if some of these claims are correct, I mean, you guys were really putting your lives on the line, so I just, I was curious why, if you guys wore any protective equipment or felt that you needed to.
We didn't, I had been to the open house for the burn building, I didn't see anybody wearing protective clothing at that, so...
Yeah.
For that example, it didn't occur to me that I probably should have been wearing something.
Yeah, I was at the, the open house as well, I didn't wear anything, but I don't, I don't think that there's any active contamination at that site.
I don't think we've spent a lot of time investigating the environmental aspect of this yet. There is going to be a symposium next Thursday, or Wednesday, next Wednesday at Edison State, and I personally am hoping to learn more about that aspect.
Um, I just, I think it's important for the city, one of the reasons why we formed your committee is to try to answer some questions. I think it's pretty self-evident that what happened out there shouldn't have happened, that's why it stopped, that's why we put a stop to it, that's why we've done numerous pieces of legislation to try and make sure it never happens again, and why we formed your committee to try to figure out how did it even happen to start with. But there's been a lot of claims that that site is an ongoing danger just by existing. We've got a lot of families in the city who, you know, they don't know if they should live here or not anymore, we've got a lot of businesses who aren't sure if they should be investing in this community or not, there's claims that the whole city has been toxified by this, but I think that after, your committee has spent several months digging into this, you know, hearing lots of testimony, reading lots of documents, I, I think it does speak volumes that when you guys went out there, and potentially your lives were on the line, that you guys did not...
You're drawing on conclusions on that.
I...
We, we don't know yet what all materials were burned out there, and some materials, when they're burned together, create new, new materials, and those have not been tested for, so it's still an open question.
But it wasn't open enough that you felt that you needed to wear protective equipment?
I was following the city's example from the burn open house. I threw my sandals away then, after our tour of the water plant.
You did throw away your sandals?
I did.
And nothing was mentioned when we were out there, so I, not until after I left, and I think, hmm, you know, maybe should have worn boots or, you know, something like that.
Did, did you feel like your life was on the line going out there?
You want to drop it?
But I guess you guys, you guys didn't think about that before you guys went out there? Because we, I, the reason why I ask is because we've had a lot of claims about kind of how dangerous it is out there that I don't think that the testing that's been done so far supports. We've heard claims that there's animals dying out there, that it's too dangerous for the police and the firefighters to go out there and train. And then you guys had a chance to go out there and in theory, if some of this stuff is, if some of these claims are correct, I mean, you guys are really putting your lives on the line. So I just, I was curious why, if you guys wore any protective equipment or felt that you needed to.
We didn't. I had been to the open house for the burn building. I didn't see anybody wearing protective clothing at that, so.
Yeah.
For that example, it didn't occur to me that I probably should have been wearing something.
Yeah, I was at the, the open house as well. I didn't wear anything, but I don't, I don't think that there's any active contamination at that site.
I don't think we've spent a lot of time investigating the environmental aspect of this yet. There is going to be a symposium next Thursday, or Wednesday, next Wednesday at Edison State. And I personally am hoping to learn more about that aspect.
I just, I think it's important for the city, one of the reasons why we formed your committee is to try to answer some questions. I think it's pretty self-evident that what happened out there shouldn't have happened. That's why it stopped. That's why we put a stop to it. That's why we've done numerous pieces of legislation to try to make sure it never happens again. And why we formed your committee to try to figure out, how did it even happen to start with? But there's been a lot of claims that that site is an ongoing danger just by existing. We've got a lot of families in the city who, you know, they don't know if they should live here or not anymore. We've got a lot of businesses who aren't sure if they should be investing in this community or not. There's claims that the whole city has been toxified by this. But I think that after, your committee has spent several months digging into this, you know, hearing lots of testimony, reading lots of documents, I, I think it does speak volumes that when you guys went out there and potentially your lives were on the line, that you guys did not.
You're drawing conclusions on that.
I.
We don't know yet what all materials were burned out there. And some materials, when they're burned together, create new materials. And those have not been tested for. So it's still an open question.
But it wasn't open enough that you felt that you needed to wear protective equipment?
I was following the city's example from the burn open house. I threw my sandals away then after our tour of the water plant.
You did throw away your sandals?
I did.
And nothing was mentioned when we were out there, so I, not until after I left that I think, you know, maybe should have worn boots or, you know, something like that.
Did, did you feel like your life was on the line going out there?
You want to drop it? I think we've answered it.
It's fine. I think you have to.
You guys have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, thanks, thanks. Nancy, thanks. Next is a presentation, a quarterly report from the park board. You got poke along, pokey coming from behind you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Natalie Young and I am the current chair of the park board. It was suggested and then discussed and agreed upon over the past couple of meetings to provide the commission with more regular updates.
Love it.
Through the year in an effort to keep things moving forward and to keep you all informed of the topics we're discussing. The main goal of what we're focusing on is crafting the content of our annual report. The board has been regularly inspecting a few parks at a time and then discussing those parks at the next meeting. All of the comments, observations, and suggestions are being recorded and the thought is that we'll vote on our top three or five for each park to include in our report, which is due to you in January. We have been actively discussing implementing a pollinator area in one of our city parks. At our last meeting, a representative from the Miami Soil and Water Conservation District along with a rep from Pheasants Forever joined us and provided basic information on topics to consider in terms of site selection, project timeframes, estimated costs. It was just a bit of a primer to get some information into the hands of the park board members. There are a number of reasons that a community would consider a project like this. More obvious reasons for establishing a pollinator area are habitat preservation, assisting the pollinator populations, and then can be as simple as park aesthetics. And one thought is it would eliminate some mowing costs as a benefit to the city. They also provided some information on rain gardens and how those can address water runoff problems. But one of the main takeaways from the presentation is that the first step is to champion the project and get community support and spread awareness. Because the sites can look ugly at first and they take some time to get established until they look pretty. There's a number of grants available. There's a number of local organizations and resources who would love to assist in getting a project like this off the ground. This is a topic that we've been discussing for probably at least two years, but only formally for the past couple of meetings. We know that available funding and getting city and community support are the major roadblocks to a project like this. So those are kind of the two main topics that we have been discussing at most of our meetings. There's a lot going on in the parks that the park board is not involved with, but hopefully everyone has seen the invitations on Facebook for the lock nine ribbon cutting and the grand opening events. They've had police in the park events with pop-up games for the kids. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to check out the new gaga ball pit at Pitts and Barker. There's a disc golf going in at Mop Park. And then, of course, there's a large group of people who are actively pursuing restoring Hans Pavilion. And the members of that group have reached out to us to keep us in the loop and I've been attending those meetings when I can. I know you have another reading for the recreational marijuana tax being earmarked for the parks budget. I would highly recommend you all support that.
Of course.
As the parks budget is not nearly enough to cover the types of improvements that we would love to see in our parks. I was glad to hear that that recommendation was made by the city manager. I think my real hope is to get some clarity from the city going forward in terms of what their vision is for our parks and would encourage the community to attend any of our meetings to make suggestions of what they would like to see in our parks in the coming years. I know it was mentioned in our annual report in January 24 that the park board did not want to hire another consultant and rather utilize the comprehensive parks master plan that was done in 2017 because we'd rather have money invested in the parks. And there's a number of great ideas and suggestions in that original plan that have not yet been implemented. Before I finish up, I know that you guys have on the agenda tonight to recognize community volunteers. I won't go through a whole long list, but I did help the Green Leaf Club this year and they planted flowers at Veterans Memorial, they planted and mulched at French Park, planted and weeded at the cannon at Rowan and Shawnee. There's other park plots that they care for and there's a number of other individuals and groups in the city that take care of our parks and other projects as well. There's a lot of people that care very deeply about our park system and I would like to take this opportunity to thank them directly from the park board. Again, I know there's a lot that I didn't mention. So at this point, I would welcome any questions from any of you. If you have suggestions for anything you would like to see included in our report or when we come back next time. And Terry has some things that he'd like to address as well, so.
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay. I wanted to bring up the point about the Mop Park building. We were told at our meeting, at our park board meeting, that the original organization for that kind of fell through and someone else picked it up, another group, and that they don't have any money to do anything up there. But I've got a copy of the lease and in the lease it says that if there's no activities by the organization in the lease, then people in the city ought to be able to rent that. And that's in the lease. And it's not in the, it's not on the website. The Mop Park building isn't listed on the website. If you want to rent the activity area at Mop Park, like the ball field or something, you can do that. There's a list on the website, on Pickwa's website. But the Mop Park building isn't even discussed. And it seems like you're missing an opportunity to get some revenue to maybe even improve that building and to help with the rest of the parks that need maintenance, like the shelter house at Fountain Park, things like that. But it seems to be the case where just because there's nobody working on it actively now, we just kind of forget about it and let it go. And in the past, we've done that with other park projects and that's why we're looking at the Hans Pavilion renovation now. Because before you guys got here, they just kind of ignored those things. And when they get to a certain point where they, they can't do maintenance on them anymore and they say, well, we got to tear it down because can't, can't use that anymore. So I just think you should look over the, the Mop Park building again and address that situation more thoroughly. And I know that the neighborhood group is interested in that, too.
No, I totally agree with you. If we can rent it out, is it rentable?
So it may not appear that we're actively doing anything with the building, but behind the scenes, there are a lot of conversations about the use and the transfer of potential lessies for that building and what the future is going to hold for it. So it is currently in the works. It's not that there's nothing going on with the building and so.
Not that, it's just, can it be rented?
Right now, no. The restrooms are not ADA compliant and there's, you know, design considerations that we're working with and an architect for potential use. And I can update the commission a later date with more information on it.
Just as a reminder, we turned, we turned back a large grant that was written for the ADA compliance issues for Mop Park because the money was not used in the prescribed time. Yeah, we did, before you were here.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry.
But I mean, the issue was, people were trying to do that work and actually wrote grant and because the money was not used in the prescribed period, the money was turned back.
Well, I can say this administration won't have that issue.
Well, and we've seen recent police reports of assaults up there at that building. We've seen police reports of vandalism and things like that will go on if you're not going to use that building and figure, you're just going to let it go and walk away from it. Okay, that's all I've got. Any other questions?
One more question. Will you have an opportunity to participate in the capital improvements discussion that will come up later in the summer and into the fall about projects? For instance, the Hans Pavilion is on the capital improvements list.
Well, we can, we haven't been invited to it, but we can. But we've got two people on the park board that can write grants and, and we're willing to do that. You know, I've been successful with the high schools that I worked with for grants and we've got another lady, full-time professional.
Julie Smith?
That's all she does. So you've got people on this board that want to do something. We don't want to just come and sit and listen to another slideshow of lock nine, you know, and go home and say, well, you're doing a great job. We want to do something and you've got people on there that are actively want to participate and get things going.
Yes.
I can, so the CIP project, the assistant city manager is, kind of helps lead our meetings. And she did provide us, I don't know if it's probably our June meeting, it could have been April, with a bunch of the big, huge projects, you know, stuff that's way out of our purview in terms of, you know, dollar amounts. And we all did vote. We kind of put everything up on the board and we all voted in our top five that the board is supporting is the Miracle Field, the kayak rental, the dining hall renovations, the tennis courts and the splash, splash pad. But I can't even tell you if Hans Pavilion was on that suggested list at the time.
I think it is.
Yeah. So I mean, not based on what we.
Not true.
Voting on that day, like what was put on our board, so.
So if I may here, I'd like to start with first thanking both of you and all the members who are on the board who are not here for your time and your service. One of the things that are absolutely instrumental in a community's health and growth are its parks and recreations. So it's music to my ears that your, your quest to not just attend meetings is there. And Natalie, you and I have had conversations about this and I know it's become a labor of love for you with the board. And I know I've mentioned this to you before, but one of the things that you asked for was, was guidance, thoughts, recommendations. So I'm going to give you my two cents. I have a sneaking suspicion that once we get through the, the three readings of the ordinance for what to do with the tax money from the recreational marijuana, that it's going to pass. And then we're going to be, have to wait for the state and all this to come before dollars actually show up. But I do, what I do not want to see happen is when those dollars start flowing is for us not to have a plan. So I would love to see from the park board and your annual report or your annual plan, your wish list, right? I want to see, I don't want anything, well, we can't do that because that's going to cost too much money, right? Unfortunately, that's what we're up here to figure out, is what we do with those resources. But I, I don't know when the last time we actually did a plan of, this is the inventory of the parks that we have, these are the upgrades and the investments that the community would like to see made in these parks. Or maybe it's, I'm not sure what purpose this piece of land provides at this time. Or I don't know what that looks like, but I sure would like to see it as we're beginning to have the conversation of, with this addition of revenue coming in, where do we allocate those resources within the park system? So I don't know what my, my colleagues, if they're, I've, I've not mentioned this to any of them, I don't know if they're supportive or not, but.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Carter. Take a quick vote.
Yeah, right. Like, I know that's something that I would like to see as we're heading towards making these decisions as I'm, I'm forecasting a little bit, but I think it's going to pass.
Thank you.
And one of the things I want, like, the diversity committee, our, the park board knows that the diversity committee has jumped on board with a volunteer effort to, to help clean one of the parks, the one that, oh gosh, I can't even think of the name of it. As you come, Giles, Goodrich Giles Park. So they're going to come out and the members are, our first cleaning is going to be the twenty, it's next Thursday, 23rd, I think.
This day will be the 18th.
18th, so it's 25th. So we will be out there cleaning the parks. We want to keep, parks are important and to not just us, to various boards and to a lot of citizens and we know. And we appreciate your, your dedication and what you guys are putting. We know you want to do something. We definitely know that and we hear you. And I'm glad you guys came up and said that. And with that said, you guys were invited to the lock nine. Okay, just want to make sure, because that's part of your purview as well, so. And I thank you. Thank you for the presentation and just keep letting us know what's going on and what, what you guys have in mind.
Before Mr. Simmons comments, I guess, just to kind of respond to you, I think that's kind of where our thought is, is, you know, if we just work on this, on these recommendations, you know, that'll kind of give us this, this long-term view. And, you know, what each park is, is lacking, what is, you know, small things that can be added to them. I mean, we would love to spend millions of dollars in the parks, but we know we can't do that. So, you know, we just, I feel like we would like a little bit, maybe more conversation from, from the city and, you know, whether that's you or the city employees, just in terms of, you know, we got new signs for all the parks, but we didn't get one for Shawnee. So I have a sneaking suspicion, are we trying to vacate Shawnee? Because to me, that's the very first park we should be putting money into. And so those kinds of things, I don't, I'm not saying ill-intent by any means, but it's just.
Just want to be informed.
We would like to, you know, if we're going to do this and we're all going to work together and we just want to kind of help, why would I waste my time going to make a bunch of recommendations for Shawnee Park if.
Agreed.
You know, so those are the kinds of things that I think we're maybe having a little bit of struggling through. But I don't, I think it's all stuff that can be remedied and we just need to kind of.
Easily remedy.
Sure.
Yeah. Do you have something?
So I spent two years on the park board. I think Joe spent a year on the park board. And for the time I was on the park board, if I had a dollar for every time I heard we didn't have the money, we would have had the money. So that, you basically, you guys, and I love, I loved what I was, what we were able to do because we did a whole lot with not a lot. You guys have a lot of things that we have to take care of, we have to keep, upkeep, and there should be balance. And so as far as revenue goes, yeah, when we go to vote for, where's that tax money go from recreational cannabis? I, I'm going to vote for it. Plus you have the possibility of grants being written and income coming in from rentals. If we can get Mop Park set up with that building, I've actually been in that building, went to a birthday party there once. It, it's a good facility and if we can bring it up to, up to date, that would be a good source of revenue for, for the parks. But between those three and volunteerism, you know, I think we have a really good future for the parks board.
Interesting. If you, folks would take a look at the 2017 study that we paid money for about parks, it speaks to some of those very questions. How do you raise money for the park system if the city general fund is not able to do that? And it speaks to grants and all kinds of things. So for folks who haven't seen that report, it can be, it can be refreshed, but it's still pretty active.
Yes, there's gold in that report, so. But we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think it's just more of a matter of, there's a lot of moving arms and, you know, like you said, if we're going to have a global vision, we've got to get some like global activity, like us all working together instead of kind of feeling like we're all.
Yeah.
Different spots, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'll be five o'clock.
In the afternoon.
I'll announce it, yeah. Next is a, a presentation from the finance department by Mr. O'Brien.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. So I want to talk a little bit tonight about the finance department and give an overview of what it is that we do. So this picture here was taken a few months back when we were celebrating the news that we just found out that the city received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for 2022 Annual Financial Report. So what is the finance office? It's the centralized business operations for the entire city and composed the four integrated components here. The revenue and expenditures management that we take care of and the planning and budgeting, the financial reporting after the money is spent, and then the oversight to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. So this is our mission statement here. The finance department's mission is to maintain and fiscal credibility and integrity of all financial activities with accuracy, timeliness, and consistency of the city of Pickwa. Our commitment is to continually improve communications, to be courteous, trustworthy, cooperative, and knowledgeable in order to provide better quality of service to our internal and external customers. So here's a list of our employees in the finance department. We have nine employees that staff the department. And our areas of operation are the city finance operations, which is everything we do, and then the income tax operations, which is a separate. then the income tax operations, which is a separate component. And we'll talk about the income tax operations toward the end of the presentation. So this is a list of the main functions that we do, these are the types of business operations and our main tasks throughout the year that we perform. Some of these are once a year and some of these are ongoing. And I wanna go through each of these and just give a brief overview of what we do in these areas. So this slide is talking about a budget. So budget, we talk a lot about budgets, but what exactly is it? And it is the intended financial plan for the next calendar year that we put together. But the difference between, you know, businesses usually have a budget, but the differences between the budget in the private sector and a budget in the government sector is, in the government sector is the law. So we can't spend money without a budget that has been properly approved by the city commission. So on 1/1 of, the beginning of the year, if that budget is not improved, then we can't spend money. So, it starts out with the estimated revenues and we figure out what we expect to get. And then that revenue, that estimated revenue is combined with fund balances to determine what money is available for appropriations, you know, what can be in the budget and what can be appropriated. Also, we take into account at year-end, you know, any encumbered amounts that are earmarked for invoices of the year that we won't receive until the next year, then we have to exclude those from the available resources as well. So, as the year goes on, we need to, you know, be aware if we see, notice that any actual revenue being received is not, you know, is not what we expected and it's going to be less than what we estimated, then we, you know, are going to have to adjust that, those estimates. And accordingly, we would have to possibly adjust the appropriations down as well. The appropriations have to, which are the estimated expenditures, have to be less than what our estimated revenue plus our fund balance is. And this is, so each time that we pass appropriations for the beginning budget and then each time we do a supplemental appropriation, those appropriations have to be certified to the county auditor. County auditor looks at that, compares that to our amended certificate of resources and if it's, as long as the appropriations are under the available resources, then it's certified and if it's not, then they note that it's in violation. So, then we would have to do something about fixing that. If this process is followed correctly, then the government, you know, would not overspend funds. When you hear of governments getting into trouble, you know, winding up saying fiscal emergency, having financial worries, usually they weren't following that process like they should have been. So the budget, like I said, this is the law, so it becomes an ordinance, is passed as an ordinance in the beginning and then each time that the budget is amended, then that is an amendment to that ordinance, so that's how we pass it. The budget is completed anyway, so the budget takes, the original appropriations that are passed take effect on 1/1 and allow the government to spend money, but on 12/31, any appropriations in effect at that time lapse and that money just rolls back into the fund balance and you can't spend money against those appropriations after 12/31. So to create the budgetary process, or the budget, is about a five-month process to complete and involves, you know, the citizens, departments, department heads, city commission, city manager, everybody gets involved in the budget process. And this is kind of what the timeline looks like, like I said, we begin with looking at the estimated revenues and then we start meeting with departments, getting their information, and then it goes back and forth between the department and the city manager and the finance director and until everybody, to arrive at a budget that everybody is satisfied with and then we can bring that to the commission for their consideration. And this cultivates in the appropriation being passed by the commission, usually in earlier mid-December. So for 2024, this is just an overview of the budget. Our budget was just under $90 million excluding transfers. So the next thing on the list was purchasing, so the purchasing function of the finance department is to oversee all the purchases. The mission of the purchasing function is to ensure that public funds are spent in accordance with the city policies and procedures and encourage competition among vendors and assist employees with making purchases. So here are just some of the contracts that are coordinated by the purchasing function. We have two people that, two purchasing managers that oversee that process. So, part of what they do is coordinate the bidding process for departments when necessary, you know, obtain quotes, do the formal bidding process if necessary for expenditures, contracts over $25,000. And usually approximately a dozen or so projects are bid at each year. And then they review the, the contract, purchasing managers review purchases daily and they monitor the budget against the request and issue purchase orders. So part of that is the encumbering process, so they look and see if there's budget available. If there's not, then they would either have to come back to the commission or in certain instances within a division, finance department would be able to move money between certain lines, but other than that, it would have to come back to the commission if there's an increase in the budget. So they also monitor the, we have online bidding, so they monitor that. Administer the construction contracts. One of the things that we're doing right now, we're in the process of moving to online signing of contracts. So we had, so we were doing online bidding for some contracts, but we have moved to, we want to get all contracts to be able to move through the electronic signature process so to kind of make things more efficient and speed things up. Because right now, we're moving around contracts on paper between departments to get the proper signatures, so that, this'll speed that process up. The accounts payable is a big area, a big function in the finance department. All of those purchases of the city are paid through finance. So any, anything that's paid, any money that's paid out has to come through that process. And we paid about 1,161 vendors last year. Accounts payable, we do a check run weekly and there are, we're nine, over 9,000 invoices yearly. And about 62 million in was spent for goods and services. So the payroll, we have about 180 full-time employees and the payroll is done bi-weekly. We do the coordination of benefits, we have to withhold all the federal and state taxes, those are withheld and submitted to the IRS, to the state, and then the city taxes as well. So there's quite a bit of work that goes into the payroll and that has to be done every two weeks. So we do a really good job of processing that and getting people paid on time and the annual payroll was about 16 million plus for the entire city. So the accounting and reporting after the money is spent, then it's time for the reporting. Well, some of that though, it goes on continually, so part of our job is to advise the departments daily, we're always, everybody in the department is answering questions and corresponding with people across the city and helping them with various accounting questions. And then we report, we do monthly reports for the commission and then the annual audit is done every year. This is required by the state, it's also required by the city charter. So, this process is the, we, it's under the auditor of states umbrella and they can either do the audit or they can let us contact out with a CPA firm, which we are, right now, we have a CPA firm hired to do the audit and have for several years. But even at that, once they get their report done, that is sent back to the state for the state to take a final review. So the other aspect of, the big aspect of accounting and reporting is doing the annual comprehensive financial report, or the act for, for short. So this report is about 135-page report of all the city's funds, covers all the financial activity for the year. It's, the information is in the report in various formats, it's broken out into the funds, it's aggregated by fund type and ultimately it's aggregated into just two columns for the citywide of governmental activities and enterprise activities, all combined into just two columns. So there, and then there are budgetary statements, there are, the report is done on a GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles basis, which means there are accruals involved in putting the report together. There are also stat tables, statistical tables in, at the end of the report that report various things. Many of those are for 10-year periods where they have such things as taxes collected, it'll show the financial information is out of some of the statements condensed for the last 10 years, shows overlapping tax base with other local governments where their taxes, you know, the appropriate assessments of their taxes would, I'm sorry, the debt, their overlapping debt would affect our tax base for jurisdictions in our, are overlapping. So we're preparing to submit this report right now for, to the Government Finance Officers Association for the 33rd year. So this report, let me back up here just a minute, so this report is put together according to the accounting standards of the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is a independent body that their job is to propagate accounting standards for local and state governments. And they usually have about, on average, two or three standards a year that we have to implement, new standards that we have to implement in our report. So when I started accounting back in 99, they were working on implementing Statement 33. Now we're on, I think, Statement 102 or 3. So it's quite a bit to keep up with and quite a lot goes into this report. But we are getting ready to, so we've got the award for the last 32 years, we're getting ready to submit it again for the 33rd year and anticipate getting that award again. A report is due, the basic part of the report, the financial statements and notes are due to the state by May 31st and then the entire act for is due to the GFOA by the end of June. So we spend the first six months of the year on and off working on this report, takes quite a bit to get this done, it takes everybody in the finance department and other departments gathering information to help with that process. And once it's submitted to the GFOA, then it's subjected to a review by three accountants that are doing report, that review reports for the GFOA. And they have to be, they can't, they can't be in, from the state of Ohio, so this organization is nationwide. So when we submit a report, then it goes to accountants in other states for review. And it goes through a very rigorous review with a very long questionnaire to answer. So one of the other functions is financing. So part of this determines, is determining the needs for projected projects, so we have to consider, you know, do we spend cash, do we issue debt, do we do a combination? So those kind of questions need to be answered when we're putting together the CIP budget and looking at what projects we want to do. And then the other step here is to employ investment policy, we want to, any money that we have on hand that we're not spending or don't intend to spend right away, and we, you know, want to have that money invested. And last year, at the end of the year, we were successful in passing the investment policy. And I've got a slide, I think it's the next one, that shows where our investments are right now. So, and then grants, which is a large part of determining what projects we can do. The departments usually apply for and administer the grants and apply them toward the projects, but the accounting, the finance department's role in that is to account for those grants to make sure that we're following all the rules. There are quite a bit of rules around that, especially federal grants, which we do have, we obtained some federal grants. So we, usually grants are, we do the work, we spend the money and then we submit the information, the, all the documentation to the grantor for reimbursement. So we have to make sure that everything is in order, make sure that all the rules were followed in order to get our money back. And then one of the things that we do is during the audit process, if we spend over 750,000 in federal money for the year, then they do what's, I guess you could call it a mini audit, it's called a single audit in the auditing world, but it basically is if we spend 700, over 750,000 federal money, then they designate some of those federal programs for a special audit. They may get audited in, if, they may get audited anyways, even if they don't, we don't meet that threshold, but if we meet that threshold, then they take a very, a closer look at the federal expenditures. And then the other item on here is evaluating borrowing options. So these are some of the options that we have, internal borrowing, we did last year, we did do some internal borrowing. The Lot 9 fund borrowed money from the SOR fund to help fund that project. Then we also issued bonds last year, non-tax revenue bonds to buy the property for the Scott Drive project. Now we expect to, right now, we're working on selling that property to the developer and so we're about to recoup those costs and be able to pay off most, if not all of that, those bond, that outstanding bond debt. And then we also have various loans in the enterprise funds through OWDA and AMP and the Higher Public Works Commission, OPWC. the Higher Public Works Commission, OPWC. So this is a picture of our investments. This was, this is from our investment advisor. So currently, we have about 45 million, just under, 45,768 invested as of the end of So this will give you an idea for that month, then we had 118,000 in interest and 25, over 25,000 in gains on the sale of investments. So the other function that we do is internal auditing and regulatory compliance, which is a big part of our work as well. So, you know, we review contracts, financial transactions, and agreements for compliance. And we have a lot of rules to follow in government, so what makes it so complicated? So we have the Ohio Revised Code, there are many rules in there regarding the spending of public money. We have guidance from the Auditor of State's office. They regularly issue bulletins that we have to keep up with, read, and make sure that we're applying their guidance. There's federal guidance on the spending of federal money, and then there's accounting guidance through the GASB board and the GFOA. So there's quite a bit to keep up with on the compliance. So we review the transactions for proper documentation during the AP process to make sure that there's documentation there, because if, in government, even if we spend money for a proper purpose and everything is okay, if we can't prove that, we don't have documentation for it, then the auditors would consider that not for a public purpose. So by default, it would not be a good expenditure if we can't prove that it was. So we have to maintain proper documentation. As part of doing this, we review the Higher Compliance Supplement, which is a document on the Auditor of State's website that has a lot of rules and also what they use for their audit test. So we can follow that documentation, we kind of know what the auditors are looking for and can apply that ahead of time. Like I said, there are bulletins to keep up with. And then keeping up with the new pronouncements, accounting standards. So we attend training throughout the year. And as part of my certification as a CPA and as a certified government finance manager, I have to maintain at least 40 hours of training each year. So I want to talk a little about fund accounting, just to get a brief overview of what it means and so that terminology, you know, kind of familiarize you with the terminology. So fund accounting is used to demonstrate fiscal responsibility, is, basically, a fund is a, an account that has a self-balancing set of accounts. And it's used to monitor how the resources are allocated and spent. So it's not just a big pot that we can spend out of. Every, every dollar that comes in has to be put somewhere. Some of it is more restricted than others, but is, everything has to be put in a proper place so that we can account for and show how it was spent and that was properly spent. So before fund accounting, governments tended to have a lot of bank accounts, but that was very inefficient and cumbersome. So they, you know, they developed fund accounting and, so we didn't have to have so many bank accounts, but that's what makes government accounting and finance much more complicated than accounting in the private sector. So the funds for the city are, we have governmental funds, and these are funds basically that are more, you, more broadly, for use, you know, more, have a more broad use across the city. And they're generally funded by taxes and some user fees and so forth, but as opposed to proprietary funds, which are strictly set up as, and run more like a business entity. So the governmental funds include the general fund, and then special revenue funds, which usually have a revenue source dedicated to them that's restricted by law in a lot of cases, and has to be used for a certain purpose, so it's put in a special revenue fund. General fund, we can spend money out of all, or spend money on anything in the city out of the general fund. And then the internal service funds are funds created by the city to account for activities within the city, like the IT function, the employee's health fund. And we take money out of each of the funds. It's easier to fund those internal service funds for those types of activities. Workers' comp is another one. And then we can pay the bills out of that one fund, and then each fund contributes their share to that fund. And fiduciary funds are basically funds that, that somebody else's money that we're holding from for some purpose or other. It's not our money, we can't spend it for what we want. So the enterprise funds for the city are the utility funds and the golf and funds. So these are a list of our enterprise funds. The general fund, like I said, this is our main operating fund. On the right are things that are normally spent out of the general fund, the partially, the city building, the city manager, engineering, finance, and law, these are, and HR, these are activities, you know, administrative functions that would generally be paid for out of the general fund, and that's where they live. The other, on the left here, are some other funds that here at the city, we combine those funds together, like the police and fire fund is, you know, the safety fund is combined with the general fund, even though it's a separate fund. Same thing with the parks. So this is just a snapshot of the general fund revenues, or, I'm sorry, the governmental revenues for the last year, just to get an idea of what we spend per month, or receive per month. And the two biggest months there, September and October, those are kind of outliers. In September, we recognized the ARPA money that the city had received as about $2.4 million, and we were able to utilize those resources to pay police and fire salaries. And then in October was where we issued, we received the debt proceeds from issuing the bonds last year. And then this is a snapshot of the expenditures, and this is a three-year period. It kind of shows you, for the most part, our expenditures are relatively stable across the years. October of last year was where we used the proceeds that we received on the debt issuance to purchase the property for the Scott Drive project. And this is a pie chart of the governmental fund expenditures. And it's kind of hard with, these colors are pretty close to the same, but the biggest chunk of the pie here is from about, I don't know, 130 to 630. That's the safety fund expenditures, is our biggest expenditure. And then the second big, second biggest one there is over on the, about 830 to 12 would be the capital outweigh. And then the other one there at the top is the administrative, general government administrative expenditures, which covers those functions I just described a few minutes ago. And then on the income tax, so now we do not actually administrate or administer the taxes within the finance department. We contracted with RITA, the Regional Income Tax Agency, to administer those taxes. But this is a chart out of our ACTFO, one of the statistical tables for this year, which shows the taxes collected on a cash basis for the last 10 years. So the takeaway from this table is that the trend keeps slowly going in the right direction there, which is up. So last year, our total taxes collected was about $15 million. Now I want to wrap up with our goals. So these are just some of the things that I want to do in the near future and are working on, the department is working on, is evaluating current processes to identify improvements to achieve more efficiencies, and utilize technology to allow the finance department to operate more efficiently and effectively. So, and then we just got the software program for the budget process, so that will help a lot with that process. As you can see, that was a pretty lengthy process, and this will take a lot of hours off of that process. The other way that we're streamlining the process and moving the department toward being more efficient and more electronic is we're conducting a major over upgrade on our accounting system. So this, our accounting system, we first implemented, I think, in 2011, and it's never had major upgrades. It had some smaller upgrades, but due to a lot of customization, we had around the UBO function, which now has been moved out of the accounting system, we weren't able to do major upgrades. We're working on that now, we've been talking to the company. So that will help a lot, that we'll move to a cloud version. And they've improved a lot since we first got the system as far as reporting. And they also have a reporting function, and that's on the internal reports, also have another reporting function, Tableau, with the new cloud version, which looks to be pretty exciting. We'll be able to do some reporting with that. And then we're evaluating software for an annual financial reporting process. So the system we're using now that we're, that we just wrapped up with doing the report, it was a very cumbersome process with a lot of data entry and using a lot of Excel spreadsheets. So we're looking at software programs for that to see what, how we could streamline that process. And then one of the other things that we want to do is migrate toward a more paperless environment. So right now, we have a lot of paper that gets passed around and signed and reviewed by directors and managers. We want to get all of that in the system and have that online and use electronic workflows and everything, get approved on, within the system, and then the, everything, all the documentation for all the receipts and expenditures would be in the system rather than in paper files. And as part of this process, we'll be able to strengthen the internal auditing program through, as we streamline our processes, and through this process, we'll be able to develop stronger internal controls with electronic approvals and many of the other efficiencies that we'll gain. This will help with the internal auditing process, we'll have more time to focus on reviewing things and looking at that process and making sure that things are in order. And that's all I have.
Anything from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. It's a presentation, no? No, you can, you can ask.
There's never been public comment on presentations.
No. We just had two other presentations, there's no public comment. Okay. All right. I'm just saying, you can ask during your, during your time. Consent agenda.
Consent agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 18th regular commission meeting and June 25th special commission meeting. A resolution 96-24, a resolution of appreciation for the first half of 2024 City of Pickle volunteers. Resolution 97-24, resolution appointing a board member to the diversity committee. Resolution 90, R-90-24, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with ClearGov for a software solution to aid in the annual budgeting process. That's, that's an amendment to that resolution.
Anything from commission on consent agenda? Who got appointed to the diversity committee?
Jim Sheets.
Do we have, do you have any examples of some of the volunteers, some of the things that they've done, or any names or people?
It's in the.
Is it? Okay.
Do you want to read them?
Sure. I can find them. Yeah. I don't know if you, how many names are there?
Lots.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you, everybody who volunteered.
Thank you for all the volunteers.
Yeah. Well, a lot of opportunities out there, and your, your effort is much appreciated.
Any questions from citizens on the consent agenda? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Who has consented? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're on to old business, reference to ordinance number O-9-24, second reading.
An ordinance allocating adult-use cannabis, marijuana excise tax revenue.
This is just the, this is just the second read of the, the ordinance allocating the funds from the marijuana tax to go into the parks fund.
Any questions from commissioners? I mean, I know a lot of it's pending what the state does, but we have to have something in place before.
Before they do.
Mm-hmm. So, but it's a win, especially if we can get it to the Parks Department, which is Paul's idea. Any questions from citizens?
Yeah. I'm excited to see that this is a big win. I understood from watching one of the past commission meetings that mainly the taxes were going to be realized by the county and not so much by the city. Has that changed?
On, on medical, it's realized by the county. On recreational, we get 10%, there's a 36% that's, that's taxed, we get 10% of that.
Okay. I would kind of like to see these pot shops exploited even more for their ability to produce revenue for the city, similar to what Country Concert does for Fort Larmie. If we can go in that direction, I know that would be kind of a hassle for, it may be, you know, a challenge for the police department to have to kind of keep up with any type of festival that might go on in relation to the, the passage of this. But other communities do this. I know they do this out in Colorado, and I don't know the history behind it, but the date, 4/20 became synonymous with marijuana in general. And I saw some posts online from the Crooked Handle, how they exploited that date. They came out with like the marijuana mojito or hash brown or, you know, all sorts of different stuff. different stuff. So they exploited that date to their benefit. I think that we should, as a community, I mean, if this is parks and recreation, maybe we can do something at the Johnson Farm and, you know, make a big to-do at 4/20, some type of festival that brings in a lot of revenue for the city.
I think some of those things might evolve organically. I, in fact, I can almost guarantee a lot of those things will evolve organically. I don't, it's.
Well, doesn't there have to be like some regulations, I mean, for sure, set in place? You know, when they had the Johnson Farm Festival out there, there would often be like shuttles. I mean, you would kind of think, you know, just out of abundance caution and safety, that people, you know, it'd be best for like shuttles to take people, transport.
Are you asking for like the city to like host an event, like sponsor an event?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just like Fort Army does.
Johnson Farm is all volunteer.
Well, just like Fort Army does Country Concert, I think that we can exploit the use.
Country concerts.
I know, but.
Theoretically family-friendly, or it can be certain.
Exactly.
But I don't know that.
You know where I'm going with this though.
Recreational is though.
You know, you kind of get the picture.
Oh, no, I didn't exactly where you were going, but that's what I'm saying. I don't know that recreational 4/20 festivals are necessarily family-friendly. That's not to say that we oppose organic events, but I don't know that we'd be able to put one on.
No, it's, it's just something to think about because of the revenue that we could generate from two dispensaries here in town.
Right.
Plus, we got the new, what is it, the new Hilton Hotel now, or that's going to be in development. So that can be, you know, another source of revenue in relation to something like that. And you have all the, like, like Crooked Handle did for the 4/20, they capitalized on it. So you have all the restaurants downtown that could possibly capitalize on this movement as well. You know, I would just like to see as much revenue as possible come into the city from the passage of this recreational marijuana, yeah.
If I had my say, so the, I know the state would never go for this, but we would actually allow the parks to grow and supply to the dispensaries, and we could get a whole lot more money for the Parks Department. But like I said, they're never going to go for it.
But one step at a time.
Yeah, I could see this.
3.6 percent. Think about this. If we are, as far as I know, in Miami County, we're the only two dispensaries here, and at least one of those that I know of is all set, as soon as the state says, yep, you can do it, they're set to do, to be able to do recreational. And if we had, say, oh, $100,000 worth in a year, we get 3.6 percent of that, which is not a bad chunk of change.
Mm-hmm. But I could just see the funds going, extending well beyond the Parks Department to benefit the city in other directions as well. I mean, you're talking about.
Thirty seconds.
You know, streets, street repair, all sorts of different directions. I just, I just really envision it being bigger than what it is. I know it's not family-friendly, I know, but they do do this in other states and other communities, and they pull it off somehow. So maybe we can extrapolate from their model and kind of look into how they do it and coordinate it, and maybe we can capitalize on that.
Yeah, I definitely hear you on maximizing that. I really think, I, I don't think there's going to be any shortage of organic.
I could say it organically, yeah.
Yeah, community-driven events around those dates and other dates as well. You know, I, I don't know that the city necessarily needs to get involved in that as like a champion of that, maybe in the first or second year. Maybe we'll see where this goes, you know, five, 10 years from now. But I, I don't, I, I definitely agree that we want to not discourage any utilization of it so that we can get that revenue. But, you know, there's a, there's a difference between not discouraging and then creating events that people's kids can't go to. That's, that's, that's hard. All right.
Sure.
Your time's up.
Sure.
Sorry. Thank you.
May I have a point of clarification?
Sure.
That's okay. So the 10 percent that the state would get off of the sales tax, the city would receive 36 percent of that 10 percent?
Yes.
So in simple numbers, if you add $1 million of sales taxes state collects, they, they get 100,000, I should say, if they had a million in sales, they would get 100,000. We'd get 36,000 per million.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
That'll serve as a.
Oh, there we have one.
Jeff Grimes. I'm all for giving a lot of this money to the parks, but our streets could use a lot of money too. So maybe we could, you know, split it, or, I don't know how much money would come in, you could cap it for the parks, but I think the citizens of Pickle would like our streets repaired too. So maybe just a suggestion that it could be split between streets and parks, or if you get to a certain amount to the, that you're giving to the parks, then start on the streets. Our streets are terrible, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Edward. I believe you had a presentation a few weeks ago, can you remind me of the gentleman's name? He gave a really great presentation on Trent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a really good presentation on kind of the, the new way that your, you know, your department, are you leading that department to create a new plan for the roads? They've kind of been left to be as they were previous to your, your tenure here, and there's a new plan for resurfacing them and trying to extend their lifespan on that. And I believe that that's all budgeted in there. I, I definitely hear Mr. Grimes' point about focusing on roads, and I, I think you are. I think if we roll back the tape to a few weeks ago and watch that presentation, I think it gets laid out very nicely there. And I think the parks, I think that they have been wanting for, for some cash for a while. I think that our families, as much as they would like to drive on, on nice smooth roads, getting to the parks, they'd also like there to be parks at the end of their drive. So I, I think that we can, we can handle both without necessarily pulling the money from the cannabis revenue away from the parks.
So just a brief overview of the expected revenue from the cannabis, it should be anywhere from $300,000 to $600,000 a year, so you're not talking about millions of dollars of windfall. The street levy, the resurfacing is paid for under the levy, it's collected right off the income tax. I believe it's 1.3 million-ish a year. Jerry will probably correct me after the meeting, but nonetheless, we could have three or four or five million dollars in resurfacing a year and still not catch up. I mean, the, the cost of, the product has outpaced our ability to maintain the streets, and so we're trying a different approach in trying to stabilize the patient by doing surface treatments instead of resurfacing or getting grant money such as we did with ODOT on Looney Road, which was primarily funded in whole.
All right. No other questions from citizens? That'll serve as a second reading for that ordinance. Next is new business.
Nope.
Nope? Oh, I'm sorry.
No more old.
One more old business, it's split. Ordinance number O-11-24.
This ordinance, it's an ordinance permitting the Commission to remove appointed representatives from boards created by the Commission. This ordinance was requested by the Commission, and it's the second read.
Any new questions or additional questions from Commissioners? Any questions from citizens?
Mr. Patrizio, does this ordinance address the Planning Commission as well, or are they separate?
I believe it would actually address the Planning Commission also.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can we, can we get a firmer yes or no next time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Nothing else? That'll serve as a second reading for that ordinance. Next is new business. Ordinance number O-12-24, first reading.
An ordinance to repeal Pickle Code 30-15 in its entirety and to adopt new rules for commission.
This is an ordinance that was brought up based on some things that have happened in the last year. We needed to update our rules for the Commission, and also it modifies how we handle the, the matters within the Commission, and it breaks it up into two types of parts of the meeting. The first part is the business agenda, where matters regarding ordinances, resolutions and matters from the city administration would be addressed by Commissioners. I submitted this last time when we had a work session. Mr. Hemen gave some suggestions on some changes. I incorporated some of those changes, and this is the first reading on it.
My, my thing is, is that I like the five-minute rule. I would not like it to be three minutes.
Yeah, Mayor, I actually would like to move that we amend this in the Business Agenda section, point eight, where it says three minutes. I would like to, I would move to amend it to read five minutes.
I'd agree with that.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Can we maybe call the question of adopting that amendment?
All the, those in favor of amending that section to be five minutes, section eight of the business?
Correct. So the, so point eight in the Business Agenda currently reads, "Any person providing public comment may speak once for up to a total of three minutes. On each resolution and ordinance made part of the agenda, no person shall be permitted to comment twice on an agenda item." I'd like that to be changed so that it reads, "Any person providing public comment may speak once for up to a total of five minutes."
All those in favor of that suggestion?
Say that again.
Business Agenda, point eight, where it says three minutes. So basically, this is talking about people commenting on resolutions and ordinances.
Yep.
I would like to keep that as five minutes, so I'm amending three to say five.
And you're not, I thought I heard you say taking out the part on each.
No, I just didn't want to continue reading. I, I overcommitted on that, but yes, all the only amendment, the only thing the amendment would change would be just changing three to five.
To five.
Although the rest of the language would stay.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure we weren't saying that.
No.
You, you were just changed three to five, but you only get one crack.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is this an ordinance?
Uh, well, it's just an amendment.
Amendment, okay, yeah.
Okay. I have more amendments, but I just wanted to get those. Um, I guess, so, I'm going to come back to non-agenda public comment, point 15. I forgot about that, but on rules of conduct, which is on page three of these rules, rules of conduct, I would like to move to amend by adding a point 12. And I want point 12 to read, "If during the non-agenda public comment session, the public comment cards have been exhausted and the meeting has not concluded, individuals who have not already spoken may request to do so until the conclusion of the meeting." By doing that, that would do what I had suggested a few weeks ago, which is that we use the comment cards for general public comment as the prioritization lane. If people have specific things that they wanted to comment about, then they can fill out the comment card and speak in an order that was called upon by the mayor. But once that priority list has been exhausted, then anyone who has been so inspired to come up and speak and has not already spoken may do so at that time as normal up until the conclusion of the meeting.
Commissioner? The reason why I took, didn't include that was for one reason is, is that there is going to be a box here that's going to be open the entire meeting, and that a person could put that comment card in that box during it, and it would be monitored during the entire meeting. So even if they're, if the comments have gone through and somebody is back there and didn't put it at the start of the, the non-agenda item, they could still put it in during the session. The reason why I left the card, why, why I wanted the card to stay in there, because then it would give the mayor the opportunity to read who's coming up and their, where they're located and what item they're going to talk about.
Yeah, and I agree that if you want to be on the, the fast pass priority list, you fill out the comment card, got filled out correctly, you put your name and address on there. Persons wishing to not do so, or to give erroneous information, or maybe people who just, you know, during that period, didn't come up with the idea, they just came up with it on the fly, possibility of people who maybe are infirmed and unable to walk up here, don't feel like walking up here. There's a couple of different reasons. The, I understand the point of adjusting this to give it a little bit more structure and to put a few extra guardrails and rules around conduct during the meeting, but I do like to keep a little bit of the previous spirit of the comments alive and well here. I think about having them after the comment cards have been exhausted is a equitable compromise on, on doing so.
I just want to explain why I did it for you.
I understand.
On that amendment, I have moved. He's moved. All those in favor of that amendment?
You need a second.
Yeah, moved.
Can I comment?
Please.
It sounds really good and looks really good on paper, but if there is one, even one person out there who has a learning disability and they're incapable of writing, the whole notion of doing these cards and placing those people in front of the line, there might be, someone might say discrimination against those who have learning disabilities.
Cards are permissible. I mean, it, there's plenty of case law that.
That there are people that can't write.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. The mayor was looking at me and as to what.
Like, is it, you know, is there case law on it, is what I was looking at him for, so.
May I make a recommendation, Mayor, that if anybody has any disability that they would like to address, that they could contact somebody from the city either before or at the meeting.
And we could always ask at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, we can make accommodation.
That would be good.
On Mr. Hemen's.
Can I, can I get a second from anybody, or will my motion die on the table?
You can get a second from me, but.
I appreciate that.
It was moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. That was three of them for him.
Um, okay.
All right.
So the other one I had issue with, but I forgot to do right up on, is on non-agenda public comment, point 15. It reads, "Comments by the public shall be addressed to the Commission and Mayor and shall be limited to five minutes, period, per person. Under no circumstances should the mayor, or should the Commission or mayor interrupt any person's five-minute time period unless the individual violates the rules of conduct or the individual commenting requests interactive dialogue." And I realize that the request interactive dialogue is the part that I wanted to add, and I for some reason didn't read that when I read that earlier, so I now no longer have any comments about that point.
And that's important.
Why'd you even bring it up? Because I didn't read that part earlier.
I'm actually glad he brought that up, because there's some case law out there that says if you give them five minutes, they have to have five minutes for everybody. If by putting this language in there, you're giving them that cue ahead of time, look, if you want to have a dialogue, it's going against.
It's going against your five minutes.
I actually appreciate that language.
Yeah, so I, I guess for, for those in the audience, what, what this rule would end up creating or enforcing would be, if you want to come up here and just say what you want to say, we'll sit up here and not, not interact. If you start asking questions, that then opens up interaction, and that interaction does consume your five minutes. There's been a lot of back and forth as to that and whether or not people get extra time if we have a long answer. This would add clarity and consistency to, to that interaction. So if, if we do end up passing this and you don't want your time to be absorbed by having your questions answered, then don't ask questions or state specifically that these are rhetorical questions.
Only problem I would have with that, though, is if someone comes up and asks a 15-second question and they get a five-minute answer, they just blew their, they just shot their entire five minutes. And it's not them that did it, it's us that did it.
But they know that going in with this. And they get their question answered. They're asking a question, and they wanted to answer.
Right. But I've actually seen in, in politics that where folks in our position have a capability of giving a 30-second answer, and yet they go and give a five-minute answer.
Commissioner, they can ask for the Commission to answer the question after they've asked all their questions.
That, that would, that would actually be helpful.
So there's no problem with that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the other comment I had. Um, the other comment I have is I had made, uh, some point of pointing out the guests' policy. Um, I think that the revised language in here, um, is probably a little bit better than the, uh, email that you sent me, Mr. Patrizia. Uh, you actually sold yourself a little bit short there. Um, I'm actually a little bit more satisfied with the language in this, I guess, semi-final revision. Um, my concern was that the mayor would not have the ability to invite guests, even though it's the mayor's meeting, um, that he chairs. Um, though, the limitation of the city manager having the ability to invite guests, uh, being limited to, uh, department heads, staff, uh, which makes sense, um, and then the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, was, not Main Street, um, that all makes sense. I, I think that should the mayor want to invite somebody that is relevant to those departments, that, uh, he or she can interact with the city manager to make that happen. Um, and so I think that satisfies my concern with, with that section.
Thank you.
Any other questions from, questions from citizens?
Hello, Kim Heisler, West Parkway Drive. Um, there's a, there's a few here, and I think you guys have probably seen the letter that I had written with all the, the things that I had mentioned before. Um, and some of it, I think it was gone over, but, and I thought it was changed by you guys last time, but it looks like it's still in there. Um, if I'm reading this right, number six of the Business Agenda, it says, "After the establishment of the agenda, the commission shall permit public comment." That's how it is now, right? Or is that having us come up first?
Yeah. Yeah, so after, okay, so after the establishment of the agenda, the commission shall permit public comment by the citizens as required by section four of the Pickwatt Charter, "On approved agenda items, persons making public comment shall provide," I guess I see where you're talking about, is that?
That's not making us speak first before you come out with the agenda, right?
Um, the, no, it's not, and actually, it might be better to switch. No, actually, it's in the right spot, it just is.
Okay.
If you read six, seven, and eight, you have to read them together.
Okay, um, number seven, then, um, any non-citizen, I wanted to take a look at that also again, because you guys are saying, "In the city limits," right, and not?
Yeah, I think we had talked, maybe resident was a more appropriate term.
Resident limits.
If it is a resident, I think, either, I mean, you call it a resident or you.
Well, like, if you have.
Or a citizen, whatever.
In your address.
Excuse me?
If you have Pickwatt in your address, is that considered a resident?
Yeah, to live inside this, the city limits of the city of Pickwatt. Now, you can also speak if you own a business in town and it affects your business, or, for example, the landlord had a rental property or something that affected their.
Right, that's how it's written in here, and I guess, I would still like to have, like, anybody in the city of Pickwatt to be an active member and be able to speak also, because they're contributing to the city and what we do, so, um, I would like to, you guys to reconsider that if you could. Number nine, it says, "Once public comment is completed, the commission shall immediately begin debate and deliberate on the agenda item. Um, no public comments from the public shall be permitted during the debate." Oh, that's the same as it is now, right? I guess I wrote that wrong.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I read it wrong. Number thirteen, non-agenda public comment. Non-agenda, but, non-agenda public comment sessions may, upon discretion of the commission, commence after the regular business meeting of the commission adjourns. So, that, that leaves it up to a good possibility that we may not also be able to comment afterwards.
I believe that that is currently the policy under the charter, is that.
Well, actually, under the law, there's no, there, there's no reason at all that we even have to have public, uh, comment. It is solely at the discretion of the commissioners.
I, this is just making it more blunt that it's under discretion, it's not changing that it's under discretion.
Okay, so, the more blunt is kind of what I'm worried about, because without us, I mean, we want to be heard, and we want to be seen, so if you guys can always allow that, that would be great. So, I just want to reiterate that. The, adding the comment cards, I would like to have you guys take a look at that again, too. Um, we aren't having any problem at all figuring out who's coming up first, second, third, or whatever. We're not, you know, having any issues at all. Um, it allows us, people that really want to speak, they'll be aggressive, they'll come up, it just adds another layer to make it more frustrating for us, time-consuming as well.
Um, I would, uh, my, my reasons for supporting that are with people who maybe are not as engaged with city politics all the time, and they've got, uh, some kind of event or cause that they wanted to come up and speak about, and so they know, regardless of anything that happens during the meeting, they know what they wanted to talk about, and so this gives them a way of getting ahead of some of that other discussion and, and back and forth about stuff that maybe was more acute or incidental politic.
Thirty seconds.
I understand that, it would just be nice, I mean, they, they should know coming in also that it's, at any time.
I've seen it work really well at, um, board education meetings and other places that utilize it, so.
The written commission meeting, um, agenda, I know you had written me back about having the written last week.
Time expired. Let's go ahead and finish her.
Two weeks ago, when we had that, the special meeting, when I came in ten minutes late, the audio wasn't on. When I looked at the, and then it was flipped on miraculously, like, ten minutes in. But anyways, when I looked at the website, there's like no, um, on YouTube, or there's, there's no, there was no recording of it, at least it's not. But not having the written notes.
Uh, I believe it was.
Comment does not even, it takes everybody out of the picture there.
It was a special meeting that kind of came up last minute, uh, we had to have an emergency session. Um, I believe we actually have it added in the minutes, that there was some technical difficulties because it was.
Yeah, right off, right off the bat.
Yeah, it was by the staff, so, um, there's been, uh, we had some back and forth with the city manager about perhaps planning those out a little bit more, or having the system a little bit more ready to go. Uh, we've actually done a few things to improve the system, uh, in the last few weeks, but, yeah, that was due to, uh, a technical difficulty, which is kind of outside of, you know, what our desire is, but.
Okay, but if it, I mean, you know what I'm saying, it should be written, because we won't have anything to go back to, to see what really happened.
It, it either should be written, or it should be recorded.
I believe during that special session, we, I don't think we had any general public comment either, so there wasn't.
You didn't, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so.
May I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, please.
The minutes aren't posted on the website until they're approved by you.
Yep.
Which you just did tonight.
I just did, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so I believe during that, that special meeting, um, there was unforeseen technical difficulties, so it was an emergency session. Um, we put it into the minutes that there was unforeseen technical difficulties that we were aware of.
You added that in, I remember.
Um, and then, there was no general public comment during that session, if I remember correctly, and those minutes will then be posted.
After you approved them tonight.
After we approved them tonight, so, those will then be available for the, for the public record.
So, you'll get them. Any other comments?
Jeff Grimes, so, uh, let me understand this, if you come up and ask questions, then you don't interact, then you have to answer the questions after the five minutes, is that?
Yeah, if you want us to interact with you in real time, then you'd ask a question like you just did, and I would start answering. If you didn't want me to do that, if you just wanted to ask rhetorical questions or have me answer them afterwards, you could start your, uh, five minutes by saying, "I don't want you to respond to my questions until after I'm done speaking." Um, but you would have to, as soon as you ask something with a question mark, that would then be implied that you want interaction, unless you've otherwise stated not, that you don't want interaction.
I think the five minutes, um, is unfair to the citizens that are interested and want to comment on the town, and I know for sure that they'll tell me that my five minutes is up and I ask for an additional time, and I think every time, pretty much, I've been denied.
That's not true, and you know it's not true.
I think one time, I think recently, you guys.
Well, you shut me down, you wouldn't let me talk about one night, and then you said I have extra minutes, but I think almost every time I've asked questions.
That's not every time.
So, I'm just clarifying, I probably have a hundred questions that haven't been answered, and then they say my time's up, so, what you're suggesting is I just ask you the questions, then after I get done asking the questions, and you guys will answer my questions?
I suggest that you read the, when you do ask questions and we don't answer them, then the city manager will answer the questions, and they're put in the agenda. If you read it, it, it's in there. He, he will answer your questions. You may not like what he says, but he does answer those questions. Am I correct, Paul?
Correct, they are in the agenda packet into meeting after the question is answered.
I, I believe I've actually seen a few packets where Mr. Oberdorfer has responded to your questions that you've asked at the podium that we weren't able, that we maybe just didn't have the resources at our hands to answer the question at that time, he was able to go back and re-answer those. Those end up in the next week's packet as part of the minutes. Um, another suggestion would be if you do have a hundred questions that you want answered, write, draft an email, uh, send it off to the commission and Mr. Oberdorfer, and he will, he will get them back. Um, if you are looking for more of a, a public presentation of asking those questions, then, um, yeah, maybe send those, send those questions ahead of time, and then he'll have them ready to go, and you can just say, "Hey, can you read through the questions I asked you?" Um, and he can do that as well.
And, and when I'm sitting here, I have a lot of people that are interacting with me, and they have a lot of questions, so, I prefer to have things answered so that people can hear, and not everybody is email or, you know, that type of savvy, so.
But they're on your YouTube channel?
Uh, they're on my Facebook channel.
Don't you have to have an email for Facebook?
Pardon?
Don't, don't you have to have an email to register for Facebook?
I don't, I don't know about that.
Uh, you do.
You do.
So, but a lot of people don't like using email. I, I like to interact with people, so. I'm just clarifying, if I come up and ask questions and I don't get a response, I don't ask for a response, then you'll answer the questions.
They'll either be in writing, yeah.
And I would encourage if you are kind of fielding questions, representing people kind of ad hoc, I mean, send them, send them in via email, then you can kind of be their, their help, if they're not email savvy, you could help them out with that.
I'm not email savvy.
Well.
So.
During your time, you could say, "Hey, can you answer this question in writing and send it to?" We'll, we'll do that.
It, honestly, though, I, I lost touch, it's conducted by email right now, but if you do get them written down, typed out, you can email, or, you can mail mail them, you, you can regular mail them, um, you know, to, to the, the city. Um, I, I don't know if there's a process for dropping off paper questions at, at City Hall, but, um, I mean, there's, there's certainly opportunities, should you wish to explore them.
Our window is open from eight to four, Monday through Friday, excluding holidays, and we've had people drop off questions before that I've either emailed or they submit anonymously.
I also believe that all of us have a contact information that are listed on the website. The mayor holds, um, office hours that are open to the public every Wednesday from four to six.
Thirty seconds.
That several of the commissioners show up to. There are plenty of opportunities in order for, not just you, but for other citizens or people you're interacting with, to ask questions of the commissioners, and if we don't know the answers, to go find them. Those do not have to be confined to the five-minute timeframe during public comment of a commission meeting. So, um, you can sit on all those questions for two weeks if you want, but there are plenty of other avenues to engage in a more timely manner.
Time expired.
Yeah, I know Nicholas Mark.
Yeah.
1433 Covington Avenue. Um, I, I've, you know, seen it to where mayor has graciously extended time, just like he did with Kim.
I have.
And he's, you've done that with me before.
And with Jeff.
And I believe it is in the charter that, yeah, and possibly with Jeff, I, I'm not quite sure.
I have.
But I believe it is in the charter that you can ask for an extension, and, you know, we haven't necessarily been, uh, to that, you know, we haven't come to that point. Uh, well, I think I've asked for an extension before, but you've, I think you've been gracious enough to extend, uh, extra time to the citizens throughout your tenure so far.
Want to hear you.
Yeah, and that's important.
Can I make a comment on that while you're here? The reason why you can't have extensions, there is case law out there that says if you extend one time for one person, you have to do it for everybody, and so it becomes problematic, so if he extends times for you and then does it for the next person, they're going to say, "Oh, you're, you're showing favoritism, or you're discriminating," or something like that. So, that five-minute period has to be strictly adhered to.
Oh, yeah, sure, um, but there can always be amendments made, and, um, you know, um, maybe there could be a provision put in there, like, if you participate in, uh, some type of community service, maybe you couldn't be, uh, extended or afforded. Extended or afforded some extra minutes, maybe a couple of extra minutes.
Credits and bank.
Credits, and you can bank them up, yeah.
Again, I would like to point out that, um, this all doesn't have to.
I know.
I mean, we don't have to get everything out in five minutes, right? All of us are here even after the meetings, um, where if we didn't get to finish the conversation, we can do it after the fact, and the next person can come up and begin their time. I mean, I, I, I think we're getting hung up here on, on this particular one issue.
Yeah.
And folks are acting like this is the only time, is five minutes during public comment, that they have to interact with the commission or the city staff. As the city manager, uh, note, the city building is open from eight to four every day. Um, we all have our contact information listed on the website, we're pretty easy to find if folks want to interact with us, so, I, you know, I was just kind of hung up here on.
Well, I was just, uh, a novel idea, you know, I'm just.
Well, so, I, I hear you on, on novel ideas, and just again to Mr. DeBrussa's point, um, there's multiple channels to talk.
I know.
This is a single aspect of, of talking and interacting with us. Um, I regularly get phone calls from my commission phone regularly, or fielding, fielding emails from constituents. We also, I would just like to take this opportunity to point out, uh, the mayor's office hours from, uh, four PM to six PM on Wednesdays, every Wednesday, have been a lot of fun, uh, people to go there, uh, we hang out, it's really loud, it's raucous, it's fun, uh, there's a lot of interaction, and you're not limited to five minutes talking to us, it's, it's completely unscripted, there's no, there's no, there's no format to it, it's just talking, it's great.
What hours are those again?
Four to six on Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Every Wednesday.
Uh, so a lot of people have made good use of that.
I wish I could attend something like that, uh, work, unfortunately, it gets in the way. Um, yeah, but I appreciate all you guys, you know, I think you're doing a good job, and, like, uh, mayor says, it's important to hear, hear us out.
Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Nick. No other public comment, that is just the first reading, we'll have two more readings for that.
Um, I would just, uh, make a recommendation to Mr. Patrizia, perhaps on the Business Agenda, perhaps, like, point six could be integrated with some of the surrounding points. Um, and then, I think maybe I'll talk about next reading, integrating something in seven that is more, point seven, that's more deliberate, that people who work in the city, so, people who live in the city, and then people who work in the city, um, that that, that would be who I would like to be able to hear from.
Yeah, I, I, sorry, I can comment, I, yeah, I, I think that's extremely difficult to monitor who works in the city, there, that's almost impossible.
It certainly is.
Next on our agenda is ordinance number O-13-24, first reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwatt, Ohio for the year 2024.
Mayor and commission, um, this ordinance, um, changes several of the line items in the budget, and I provide you the, uh, information on each one of those changes in the staff report, and if you have questions, I'd, um, take those now.
No PowerPoint?
Thank you very much for taking, um, some of our.
Sorry.
Recommendation to highlight this for us, um, it's much easier to see.
It does, it does, that helps. Quite a bit.
You're welcome.
Any questions from commissioners? Any questions from citizens?
Kim Heisler, West Parkway Drive. Um, I just had a question about, um, on the agenda, staff report here, it says. I just had a question about, on the agenda, staff report here, it says in the planning and zoning area that the, the increase of $26,000 is to pay for the salary of a new employee for the remainder of 2024. Does that mean that the administrative assistant gets $52,000 a year? Is it paid that much?
Dear.
I think Kyle would have to answer that.
Quite excessive.
Who? Pardon?
To me, it just seems like it's a lot of money for an administrative assistant.
The, the total number that you're looking at would be including benefits.
Thanks.
So as you're well aware, 40% or so of people's salary includes that benefit, which is health insurance, all the other numbers. So although I don't have the exact number of what a admin assistant would make, that number that would include, would include 40% for benefits. I would also note, just as I would be remiss to not, we certainly value those people greatly. They make this operation run and we would be remiss without them, so.
I mean, that's great if you get somebody, I mean, that's a great amount of money. It just seems like it's, to me, it's a lot.
Is it just a feeling you have, or do you have like some, I guess, did you like look at Glassdoor or some statistics maybe as to what the average salary is for that position?
No, but like it's more than the average of what, the average of, I don't even know what the right word to say is. The, the median average of what the city of Pickwa people, not the city of Pickwa, the people in Pickwa make.
It's really hard to look at a single specific job position and, and equate that to the per capita income, the, the average wages of a whole city.
Yeah, it may not be fair for me, it just seems like that's a lot, but that makes sense though, if it's including all of that, so, okay. Right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? That'll serve as a first reading then. Next is resolution number R-94-24.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with GovWell for a permitting software solution.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Kyle Hankman, community services director. The resolution you have before you is to enter into an agreement for permitting software. As I noted in the staff report and as you are all well aware, but I think it's important to say, in January, when the community services department was created, the intention of that department was to find deficiencies between our engineering, planning and zoning, GIS and other functions. Really, when you look at what we do in the community services department, a lot of that revolves around permits. It involves a lot of outward facing interactions. So our staff deals with people who are maybe unaware of our process or unaware of the permits that are necessary to achieve a construction thing they're trying to do or maybe rezoning or a new sign. There's a billion different kinds of permits in this community. And what I would tell you is we have multiple systems and ways to achieve that, which are very challenging for people to navigate. This system would centralize all of our permitting into a central system. It would provide external portals so someone can log in and see where they are in the process. It would have online payment options, so they would be able to pay there and receive their permit digitally if they wish, or hard copy if they're still that kind of person. That's certainly still an option. But it will increase the speed at which we will be able to provide that service, as well as being able to make it more efficient for us to be able to provide reports and data to the public to make sure they're aware of all of the activities and the efforts that we're going to as a department, to make sure that we are providing better service for them as we go through our permitting processes. So obviously, I would also like to note that staff has demoed multiple vendors. We've called almost every community that's around here and what they do. And we are recommending now, moving forward with a service called GovWell. Everybody's a GovSomething. It's their well in Gov. So we are recommending GovWell, who provides the software for service, for the permitting service. As part of the first year, it is a higher cost because there is migration of data. So the organization will take all of our existing permits, they will take all of our existing infrastructure, put it into their system, clean it up and allow us to be able to utilize that going forward. I will admit, that is a heavy lift. We have inconsistent data in our city. So an example that I like to give, which is sad but true, is there is a 100 Main Street, there is a 100 North Main Street, there's a 100 N Main Street, there's a, you know, and that's all the same place, but our data isn't reflecting that. So when somebody asks us for information, it's harder for us to be able to produce the information because our data isn't standardized. And so this will allow us to create a better backbone and create more standard data, which when people call us and say, hey, I want to know this about something, we're able to provide that data. And even better, we're able to have an online portal where someone can log in and see the zoning of their property, they can see the permits that they've been approved, they can see a lot of other information at midnight on a Tuesday when they're interested and our staff isn't available to serve them. So again, it's a, a different cost for year one, but year two and year three are, are lower than that first cost, year one cost. And we do believe that this is the most efficient, cost-effective way to achieve what we would like to achieve in our department. If there are any specific questions, I can certainly answer them. The only other item I would note is if you approve this and we move forward, we would anticipate a three-month kind of ramp up. So that's the, the data export migration and then the testing prior to us trying to let it go live to the public.
How many other softwares did you try?
We, we tried seven, but we really got deeper with four, four additional ones. And I, I think it's, it is an interesting thing to be a software salesman in that realm. The price points are, they provide the same apples and yet somehow the prices are quite different in that, in that game.
Is this the cheapest one then?
So this was actually the second cheapest one, but it provided all the features that we wanted. And to be honest, it is hard, the one that is the cheapest is the cheapest for a reason.
For a reason, yeah.
I won't give the name of that one, but we don't feel that the, the service or the ability to provide our residents what they would like. And to be honest, it was about $500 a year cheaper and that's not enough for us to justify the cause. This organization matched the second lowest price and said, you know, this is a number. So we, we believe strongly that their product is going to serve our, our community well.
Kyle, I just wanted to thank you for running through this with me and Commissioner DeBrass a few weeks ago. I think you laid out your, your plan for, for utilizing this to its full capability very well. I think it's going to be a great step forward for the city. I think probably everyone's least favorite interaction with the city government is parking tickets closely followed by permits to build something on their own land. However, there's some necessity for those permits. And so I think, as you pointed out, being able to log into a web portal, see the status of it if it's midnight on a Tuesday, being able to make that process as easy, transparent, seamless, pay for it online as possible for the citizens. It takes what is probably one of their less favorite ways of interacting with the government and making it as streamlined as possible. The modernization aspect of it is huge. This will now be able to have some of that data be integrated with some of our other systems, like you had pointed out with GIS, not to mention being able to see, you know, history on, on a house that maybe you're buying or that you have bought. I know I had some issues when I bought my house, that there was some permits that were perhaps not done the correct way that I inherited. And so I, I think that's going to be great moving forward. It's going to create a lot less confusion, it's going to make it a lot easier for your department to come answer questions. So if somebody calls up and says, hey, what happened to this, you know, it, it's a lot easier for you to go find it on the portal from your side than it is to go dig through the paperwork. You got to call somebody, hey, did you, did you lose this on your desk somewhere? This puts it all in one nice place, keeps it organized, keeps all those flows transparent so people understand where they are in the process. I think it's going to be great and I really commend you for, for putting the effort to find this, going through seven different software packages. And I can't wait to see what you do with it once we, once we approve this for you.
Thank you.
Quick, I got one question and a suggestion. So I, I love that we have, and that this gives us an external portal, because like you said, people can go check when nobody's in the office, but people can also go check when people are in the office. So this will save us labor.
Yeah, and I will say, I mean, a lot of what we are trying to do while we're looking at the departmental efficiencies is, kind of as the note to the previous conversation, I mean, labor costs are not inexpensive. And we are always looking at trying to find ways to be the most efficient way we can with our staffing. And this will allow us to be more efficient with our staffing. Even on the negative side, it will allow someone to do a complaint on their neighbor online instead of talking to our beautiful staff. It will hopefully allow somebody another opportunity to, to do that and potentially not spend five minutes or 10 minutes of our staff time. Not that we, we wouldn't if somebody called, but it gives another avenue for someone to do that and potentially makes us a little more efficient.
Well, it's not that we're going to go start chopping people out of the payroll, but.
But we don't want to get rid of anyone, we just want to make sure we continue to get things.
It will allow us to let our employees, your, your employees be that much more productive, doing the right thing at the right time. So the one suggestion that I had is that if this does wind up saving, giving the city some real savings as far as monetarily over the next few years, where the software literally pays for itself, do you think it might be possible for us to visit in the future the cost of what people pay for permits so that we pass some of those savings on to the people who actually get the permit?
I, I mean, obviously we can, yeah, please.
Yeah, I'd love to jump in on that. So as part of the permitting software, and we're doing allocated costs and trying to understand the true cost of doing business, that's an ongoing thing, but the permitting and the software is factored into that cost to provide that service. And I think it, it's been many years since they've looked at allocations and allocations is how we distribute the costs across all the different general fund and enterprise funds. And so I think that'll all be baked into it. But I can't say that the permit value would be, would be tied into what that fee or that rate or whatever that is would be. It's what we do with the rest of our fees and rates.
And just to add, just really easily, we are starting to look at some fee schedule numbers and we are beyond lower than every other community. We, we are, most communities try to cover the costs of the services they provide. For the majority of the permits that we provide, if you look at the staff time that is spent to approve that, we are substantially below that cost. So that's not to say we can't be more efficient or we can't find ways to lower those costs even additionally, but those fees already are, are extremely low. So that's something we should be proud of and obviously our goal as inflation and as the cost of everything goes up is to try to keep those as low as we possibly can for as long as we can.
I have one last comment too. So the, the IT assessment and strategic plan was identified the permitting system as part of the overall technical improvement and, and process improvements that we had. And if you look at any other community, we're at least a decade or more behind in, in having an electronic permitting system. So it's long past due.
Any questions from citizens? Oh, entertain a.
I would move that we adopt resolution R-94-24.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let me get Carrie. Next is a resolution number R-95-24.
A resolution regarding the applied for liquor permit for Quick Mart, 538 McKinley Avenue, Pickwa, Ohio.
This is an application from the people that own the Quick Mart on 538 McKinley for C1, C2 license. C1, C2 licenses permit carry out of beer and wine until 1:00. No staff had any objections to it.
Any questions from commissioners?
That's the one south in McKinley.
South, yeah, yeah.
Don't they already sell alcohol or is this the?
What's the difference in the?
Across the street.
It's the one across the street in the corner that used to be the drive-through?
That's true, the address.
Oh, I didn't know that that place is open, okay.
Not open yet.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Okay.
Chief Byham, any, any issue qualm?
No objections.
No objection from staff. Any questions from citizens? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution R-95-24.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Next on the agenda is resolution, and last on the agenda, resolution number R-98-24.
A resolution delegating the number of assistants and other subordinates to be employed in the Pickwa Police Department from the commission to the city manager.
Yeah, thank you commissioners. This request is simply from a desire to restructure the management staff within the police department. The, the approved staffing levels that you had previously approved would remain at 38 sworn officers and three civilian officers, so there would be no change in the staffing levels. What it would do would, it would result in eliminating one deputy chief position and simply replacing that sworn position with an entry level officer, placing one more resource on the street, serving the community directly. And with this restructuring, we, we would still have two deputy chiefs remaining and, and we would be able to delegate the responsibilities amongst the two remaining deputy chiefs and some of which I could undertake myself as we would meet and determine what would be appropriate, how to do that. We've had these conversations, they've been ongoing and obviously they will continue to allow for a smooth transition within the department to continue operating efficiently and both with communication and with our tasks. So this would obviously, again, it would have a financial savings in it as well, but that isn't necessarily the motive behind the request to restructure the police department management staff.
All members of the department were briefed on this?
I wouldn't say all members of the department have, but I have spoken to as many as I can possibly get to one-on-one and had the conversations, you know, discussing what my thoughts were behind it and what the motivation was and how it would be carried out.
Questions from commissioners?
Just a comment that I think is great that we'll be able to get an extra patrol officer out of this. I think in the last six months, we've increased the patrol force by four now if, if this goes through, which I think is great. I actually got a call last week about people wishing that they saw a police officer who's out in their area a little bit more. And so I think that this is going, continuing towards that of making sure that we got that police presence out there, that we're taking care of the citizens.
Right, just to be clear, we, we have added three additional sworn members to the department. This would be a fourth one that would be allocated to patrol. So we're not adding anyone necessarily, just reallocating our resources.
Any comments from citizens?
I've worked at the police department when we had two deputy chiefs and they were busy. And then they switched it to three and understandably. And now, when Gary was city manager, I believe, right at the end of his tenure and right when, when our current city manager got air, that plan was to, to, through attrition, to switch it back to, to two. So I understand what, what you're doing, so. I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now's the time for the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and commission. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Young for.
First, I'd like to thank Ms. Young for her comments this evening about the park board, and so, taking that into consideration, I'll plan on attending the next meeting with some of our staff, and maybe looking at the old master parks plan, and looking at what the improvements that they're after, to see if we can get that programmed into the CIP. I'd also like to thank her for mentioning the ribbon cutting for Lock Nine, that will be taking place at 4:00 Thursday. I would love for the community to come out and celebrate that great feature that we've added to our community. And then, lastly, on Saturday, July 27th, we have the Lock Nine launch celebration, and it starts at 5:30 with the gamut, and followed by 7:00 PM with Lady T of Cincinnati, and finishes off at 8:30 PM with Catalina Wine Mixer. So, it's a free event, it'll be the first programming that we have at Lock Nine, and I'd love to see everybody there.
Okay. Now, we'll move to commissioners' comments. We will start with Commissioner Vedder.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the next Friends of the Hands Pavilion meeting will occur this Thursday evening, 7:00 at the YMCA's Activity Center. We're very close to having nominees to serve on the board for that. We've received our 501(c)(3) status approval, as well as a text ID number, we have a post office box, and have an active Facebook page, so things are moving in a positive direction.
Yes, they are.
And we're hoping that will continue. Just would repeat the comment that was made earlier, that this is the third year that citizens have not been able to use Mo Park, and so, I think it's important that we take a step backwards, ask where we are with the process. We have not had a presentation from the committee that was proposing the power project, and it's time for reassessment on that one. On a personal note, I've had a new opportunity to appreciate the skill and friendliness and technique of the local squad. And it's, I am very fortunate to live in a city where we have a fire department squad that comes in a timely fashion, and really does a nice job, and I'm very thankful for that, so hopefully, you are thankful as well. That's for me.
All right. Commissioner Simmons?
So, really good to be here tonight, and I still think we need to have a comedy show out there at the Lock Nine. If I perform there, nothing that I say there can be held against me here. And Commissioner Vedder, if I do perform out there, I promise to keep you in stitches the right way.
Thank you.
Also, you know, the last several meetings, I've kind of waved at the camera and said that, said hello to my wife. She hasn't been for a number of months, and she's here tonight, and so now I can say hello to you. That's all I got.
All right. How about Commissioner Holman?
Um, I'll just continue on with the point that we were making earlier, that there's a lot of ways to get in contact with your commissioner, and, you know, we do have wards, you know, if you want to go contact the commissioner that's in your ward, that's fine, but you can talk to any of us. You do get to vote for all of us when we do go up, although you guys didn't get to vote for me, because I was appointed. We'll be able to resolve that in 18 months. But, yeah, there's a lot of ways to get in contact with us. I get phone calls all the time, I get emails all the time. We met a lot of different committee meetings, we have the Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00. Everybody who goes there, usually, my favorite is seeing kind of first-timers, who don't realize how much fun those meetings are, because they're not really meetings, it's just kind of a fun social gathering. People think, you know, oh, do I need to sign up? Do I only have five minutes? You know, how does this work? It's like...
People ask questions, though, and I send them to the city manager, and he answers them, and they're in the agenda packet.
So, but it's free-form, it's fun, it's hanging out, getting to just kind of chat with us more casually, chat with your fellow citizens. And then, again, if you want a more personal, one-on-one, if you've got something...
You do that, too.
You got a specific issue you want to talk about, gotten phone calls, emails, but you can meet with us, a lot of us are available on those nights, on Wednesday night, we can, you know, if you have another night of the week, or an afternoon, you'll get coffee. I don't speak for everybody, but, you know, we generally can make ourselves available for that if need be.
Well, if police officers can drink coffee, then we can, too.
That's true.
And eat donuts.
Well, they had coffee with the cop last week, it was great.
But, yeah, I would just, I would encourage people that, you know, there's plenty of ways to interact with us, and I encourage you to explore and utilize those different channels of talking with us. Other than that, one of the calls I did get this week was someone who was concerned about some crime that they saw in their area, and if you're out there, we did, I did speak to the police chief, and that will be looked into, and hopefully resolved. And there were some other issues that you had that also have been looked into, trying to keep everything anonymous, but if you're out there, we did look into that, so hopefully, your issues have been resolved. And anybody else out there, if you have issues, as I just said, you gotta give us a call, give us an email, and we'll see what we can do for you.
All right. Commissioner DeBrosse?
In the rule of the hour that we are approaching, I just want to take a minute and thank Chief Byron and the department. It's my understanding, while I was not in town, that there was an incident at Pickwa High School, that the department responded to and handled that, and brought it to a resolution, and it could have gone a very tragically different outcome there, so, again, I believe that's a reflection on you and the department, and the officers that you have on your team, and a testament to their training and their ability. So, it never ceases to amaze me, the situations that you all have to deal with, and the manner in which that you handle them. So, just wanted to take a minute to say, I understand that that could have ended several different ways that were far, far worse than what it did, so please give a shout-out or a pat on the back to the officers that were involved in that, and bringing it to the conclusion that they did. And with that, I'll yield back.
Thank you. All right. And for my time, I want to thank all of the volunteers for the first half of the year. We didn't list them all by name, but Crane Pumps had nine employees that volunteered at Mo Park. Lehman Catholic High School had 10 students that volunteered at Fountain Park, two of them were my kids. A bunch of Hair 4-H Club had 15 kids also volunteer at Fountain Park. Greenleaf Garden Club do their thing, and they volunteer, as well as the Four Seasons Garden Club, and we appreciate all the volunteerism. Also, keep in mind that on Thursday, Lock Nine dedication, what time is that again, Paul?
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM. We'll be there and do a ribbon cutting. And on the 27th, we will have our first concert performances there. And again, thank you, Chief Byron, and the Pickwa Police Department officers who responded and provided information and did what they did for that call. That was, it was on the news cycle for quite some time, and it was a pretty serious thing, and you guys handled it very well. And thanks for your dedication, your hard work, and all the officers that are involved. We got a lot of good, a lot of good officers, and we appreciate them. And that is all I have, and with that said, now's the time for public comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to address city commission on agenda items, comments are requested to be limited to five minutes. You waited a long time. That wasn't my fault.
Well, it was very interesting, though.
It was?
Yes. My name is Ruth Kuhn.
I'm Lorna Swisher.
Congratulations to the city on this wonderful Lock Nine Park and its celebration on Thursday. That having been said, Lorna and I are here to talk about the other wonderful thing going on, going on in Pickwa, and that is this outstanding mural of the Mills Brothers. It doesn't seem possible, we were here about four weeks ago, or four months ago, over four months ago, talking to you a little bit about initiating this project, and we're here to kind of tell you just quickly, I wanted to make this quick, a little update on it.
We started the actual painting of the mural about five weeks ago. The company out of Columbus Artisan Rooms, and the two artists have been incredibly gracious, and they have absolutely loved their time here in Pickwa. They've been so warmly received, people stopping by, talking to them, waving at them, taking pictures, all those kind of things. So, the bottom line is, the project will actually be done here within the next week or so, and Ruth will give you the details on the dedication.
So, we're planning a celebration of the unveiling, well, not really unveiling, because many people have seen it almost finished. August the 1st, Thursday, 5:00, there'll be more information, press releases out about it. One thing I want to tell you about that happened on Saturday, Lorna and I have been in contact with some of the Mills family. The one daughter or grand niece, great niece lives in Columbus, and I think she is the oldest living member of the Mills Brothers still alive. She is the granddaughter of the Mills Brothers. So, Saturday, I got a phone call that they were coming to Pickwa to take a look at what it looked like. This was so exciting. So, I went down, they didn't expect me to go down, so I went down, and here was this little 95-year-old woman. It was so touching, and she was so thrilled. She said, Ruth, this is, I am so proud, this is just beautiful. So, we hope to have her and her daughter here on August the 1st at 5:00, at the Park National Bank, South Parking Lot, right? Thank you so much, and it was a marathon meeting, girls.
Before you guys head down, I can just say what a great job you guys have done. You know, the money, you guys went out and just found those grants, and found the money to make that happen. You know, the city didn't put up funds for that, but you guys went out and found that, you didn't let that stop you. And let me tell you, it looks great from the ground, and you go up on the bridge, it looks really great from the bridge. I was up there when the fireworks were going off, and I looked over there, and it looks really good from the bridge. So, if you're up there, that's a great place to look at it.
You know, what's wonderful about the, it was going to be short, but it really is, so the people who are driving by on Water Street, you could, they love it when they get a red light, because they sit there and watch it. And then, coming the other way, and you can see, coming from the south on Main Street, you can start to see Pickwa, then you can start to see Faces. That outstanding mural is going to be there for years to come, so we're so glad we had a party.
I hear the people that are doing it are getting a lot of good stories from the people they're staying with, so.
Yes. You know, the other thing is, they're, now, I know it's going to be short, but this is...
You're fine, go ahead.
Their lift that we provided was running out of gas, and they didn't have a receptacle big enough to take you to the filling station. So, Doug Frankiny, who is the maintenance supervisor at Park National, said, well, just drive it down to the filling station. So, they drove the lift from that location down to the filling station, about a lockdown, and while they did it, they did a video and played the Mills Brothers music.
All right. I've heard it all, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Melanie Walker, and I just want to dig in to say what an awesome police department we have. You know, they've been doing all this stuff with the kids, the coffee, the parks, and everything. So, today, when I walked over to my house, there were two dogs running around. I put on Facebook, the one we couldn't catch, the other one didn't have a collar, well, they ended up coming over in front of the Hallmark store and almost got hit. And about that same time, here comes a patrol car weaving in and out to get around to the side street to help them and that, and a second patrol car came up. And in the meantime, my son caught the one dog, the lady that the dogs belonged to came over, and the police officer helped her get the other one.
All right, that's nice.
So, we have the best police officers around, you know, so.
Now, are dogs allowed to ride in the car?
Well, he was, he was going to put the one in the car.
I got a story from way back, and I got in trouble for that one, so that's why I'm...
Tell that story.
Nope, not telling any stories, but that was great, that they did that.
They were fabulous, and I mean, the one dog almost got hit by a semi coming down Main Street, and I wanted...
I'm glad.
The police officer to come and give him a ticket, because it was like he couldn't see the dog, and we're out there waving him, and he stopped, but they were amazing today.
Thank you.
Nicholas Mark, 1433 Covington Avenue. I did want to say that the mural is turning out really, really well. That's really exciting to see that on the building. Another thing is that I want to recognize everybody here for their commitment to the city and their service, and Chief Byron for his service, and all the officers for their service as well.
Thanks, Nick.
We do have an awesome police and fire departments, and, you know, I think we should recognize that. I know we do, but...
You do.
Maybe they don't hear it enough, so, you know, they need to understand they are greatly appreciated. I know they've saved my butt on more than one occasion. EMS are very important.
They are.
And to piggyback on what Mr. Simmons, Commissioner Simmons, said, something in relation to a comedy event, you know, I do see, I do see different, kind of like avenues, resources up here, I mean, I see like, Commissioner Holman, we could do like a first annual bicycle tour, or, you know, Mayor, we met at Mr. Hamilton's place, and we talked about a cultural festival, possibly, with a drum line and food trucks. So, that could be another thing. Mr. Vedder, like, maybe like a first annual pub crawl night on the town, it's the cat's meow type of thing, or, I don't know, but I'm just thinking of...
You won't get me in an alcohol, but that's a different issue.
Well, just Mr. Vedder, night on the town, it's the cat's meow, you know, you can put that part in quotation marks there.
You can have an annual catch your cat routine.
And then, Mr. DeBrosse, we could do like something at Edison, like a quiz bowl, or because of your experience in politics, you know, when the colleges come into Dayton every year for the basketball, maybe they could send their debate teams along with them, and have a quiz bowl, debate bowl, but Edison, these are maybe things we could think about and instilling into the community. So, just ideas.
Great ideas.
Just far-out ideas.
No, not far out.
So, far out, like a 420 Festival, I guess, I don't know.
I don't know if that's far out, but...
It's not far out, it's feasible.
Exactly.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you for your service, and thank you, Chief Byron, pass that along to everybody in the department, and thank you to the fire department as well.
Yeah.
So, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Kim Isler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. I wanted to say thank you guys for including earlier in the fire committee, and allowing them to come to the executive session, or whatever, because transparency, especially when you want them to come up with the best possible answer, and the truth is solution, it's important to have them included, so thanks for allowing them to show up at the meeting. It's very important. Also, wanted to mention something on the commission rules, number 14, had to do with no question can be like, started after 9:00 or the 9:00 timeframe. I think it's really important that, I mean, just like with tonight, there was like three presentations, some longer than others, and it totally depends on how many you guys have in there on the resolutions and stuff, but it's not, I don't think it's fair at all to really limit, put a time limit on it, because, again, it takes 1,250 of us to make a change in something, so getting our voice heard, I mean, you should be allowed to listen to like 100 of us if there needed to be. I mean, I don't, I don't think it should be limited to just a timeframe, but anyways... But anyways, if you guys could take a look at that and maybe rearrange that a little bit, that would be great. The mural, you guys are doing a great job. It's fantastic. It'd be kind of nice to maybe have even some more to bring interest, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kim.
Just on the 9:00 P.M. timeframe, it's not really about fairness, it's about practicality. Similar thing with the five minutes. It's got to be bounded somewhere. We are all human and bound by human limitations. It's also extremely common and typically, it's actually uncommon that meetings don't have an end time. Almost every meeting that you go to is going to have, you know, oh, here's your hour slot, here's your half-hour slot. For us, it's going to end up being a three-hour slot. Now, to your point about, you know, what if a hundred people show up? Well, if there's something that has got the public interest so stirred up, I definitely think that that would be a time where we would say, hey, let's amend for tonight that we are going to move to extend the meeting past 9:00 P.M. That might also prompt the mayor to say, hey, there's so much public interest in this, let's have a town hall next week. So, and as I've pointed out multiple times tonight, there's a lot of ways to talk to us. Public comment is just one, but there's a lot of other ways that have a lot less restrictions on timeframe. But yeah, that's, again, it wasn't about trying to be unfair, it's just practical to say 9:00 P.M. is a target end time.
Thomas Beck, Garfield Street here in town. Just a few things. First of all, I do want to compliment the police, the fire, especially the electrical crew. I've lived in this town twenty years, I think I've been without power less than two hours.
There you go. You're right.
You don't get that in most communities.
You don't get that. You're right.
I don't think our electrical, you know, department get the credit they deserve, so, you know, that's, you know, I speak highly of them. Email, great way to get ahold of you, all right? I've sent collectively about five or six emails in the past three, four months. Don't even get an automated reply saying it was received.
I'll check.
All right? Jack, I don't think I've sent you one, I've sent you two, at least two, so, maybe it's going into a junk mail?
It might. Let me check.
I'll try it again.
What was the topic? Maybe I can answer something.
Oh, I just, just optics, which I've been here discussing optics before. All I need to email, I received, I received your email and take it under consideration, thank you, and I'm fine.
I pull it out of the junk and send it to you tonight with a...
That would be fine.
Okay.
There's nothing that irritates me more than feeling like I'm being ignored.
You're not.
And like I said, even I just got a word, I know you got it.
You caught me.
And if you're going to promote the email, you need to respond to the email.
I would, okay.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear you, but if you don't have a question in the email, I don't have anything to respond to, but if you want...
I asked questions and gave some opinions. I never got a reply. Just, we'll leave it at that. We'll just assume it goes into junk mail. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. I'll try it again in a couple months, and we'll see what happens.
Call me, too.
Well, you know, bring that up. I love your managers' office hours, your mayor office hours, that you have from 4:00 to 6:00. Good idea. Maybe a couple times a year, move the time around a little bit. I mean, these things that start at 4:00 and 5:00 and 6:00, you know, for a lot of working folks, the time you get back in town, or get your kids arranged, or get a quick meal, it's hard to get to them. I understand why you want to, you know, you don't want to start these meetings at 7:30, 8:00, especially with the way they've been the past year.
I started them before, because that's when I get back in town.
You'd be here until midnight, you know?
Because I work, too.
So, I get that, but at the same time, when you're setting times, think about, you know, Joe Schmo being able to get to the meetings. That would be one advice. Meetings, commission rules, I think they're needed, I think they're necessary.
Keep sending them.
Just be very, very careful with them. You can go too far, you can start restricting, making people feel like their opinions aren't being heard. Like I said, nothing makes me more upset than feeling like I'm ignored, or that my opinion don't matter. That doesn't mean I always have to agree with you, or you have to agree with me.
No, I agree.
But if I ever feel that anybody, myself or anybody else, is not allowed to be heard, I will be here speaking my mind on that.
Appreciate that.
I've been around media for decades, and as part of that, I go around, I watch school board meetings and council and commission meetings, you know, all around the state and the country. The atmosphere that's been here for the past year or so, it's not something that's unique to Pickle right now. It's just, there's just something in the culture. And I don't know the fix for that, but I knew, I do know, and I appreciate all that you do. I personally hold you guys at a little higher standard than those back here. Sometimes you just got to take it.
We do.
And sometimes you're a little quick, you know, I watch it from a, you know, media point of view at home sometimes. Some of you, once in a while, you come across as a little snippy. I may not be disagreeing with what you say, but you come across a little snippy. Other people up here, sometimes I feel like they're talking down to me as a viewer. You know, we're back to optics. It makes a difference. You know, a lot of times, and a lot of communication's been going on both sides, it ain't what's being said, it's how it's being said. And please, keep working on that, because there's going to come a point, is if it can't get under control, there's going to have to be changes made just for the sake of change. And that's ugly, that can be expensive if you're talking about paid staff. We don't go down that road. I've seen a little broadcast, a little bit of progress the past couple months. Let's hope that continues. I know it's not easy being up there, and you guys get, you know, verbally assaulted sometimes, and...
Thirty seconds.
You know, so, just take that deep breath when you need to, you know, keep working at it. Thank you.
Did, was there any specific things in the rules that you thought were maybe overboard? You'd warned about that?
Well, just in general, you know, I...
Oh, you don't have any specific? No, okay.
I don't have anything, I don't have anything specific, it's just, you know, sometimes things, sometimes things aren't necessarily cut and dry, there's got to be a little flexibility with the rules. And that's, that's the main thing, you know? And if an answer goes long, sometimes an answer might take seven minutes instead of five, but, you know, again, it, it's, there's some shades of gray in there, and it's just, you know, we're shutting comments off at 9:00 because it's 9:00, when there might be twenty people or ten people. You know, be careful doing that, too. You know, there might be a time where it needs to be done and it makes sense, but that ain't always. If you can go to 9:15 sometimes, might not be a bad idea. So, just, just be careful with it. It's just my advice.
I want to invite everybody to come to Edison State College, July 24th, at 6:00 P.M. We are having environmental supposing, and Scott Smith, who investigated East Palestine, will be a guest speaker. Maybe we can get to the bottom of what actually happened in our town. At the last Battery Burning Committee meeting, a water ex-employee came forward and said that documents were fraudently reported. This is very concerning. The city cannot investigate itself. We need a special prosecutor to come in and investigate what happened at 9,300 State Route 66. So then, here's going to be the questions. How much money did the city collect in permit fees? We could do 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023. Where do code enforcement fines go to? How much revenue did the city make on code enforcement fees in 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023? Where did the $38,000 come from to demolish the condemned hotel? And has that been approved by the commission? Who budgeted for the electric and water bills and in Pickle employees working at 9,300 State Route 66? And who audited that money and who approved it? The budget report said that they were going to hire an accounting firm, and why would you hire an accounting firm if the state is still going to audit it? How much did it cost to hire this accounting firm? They said that $750,000 in government grants were received, and what were they, and where were they spent? How was TIF money used for the purchase of a condemned hotel because there were other interests in that property? And if the Board of Education has $2 million in tax money, then property taxes should be lowered for Pickle citizens. They also said that money was taken from the sewer fund, and it was used to fund Lock Nine. How will Lock Nine repay this money? And if the sewer fund has $9 million in surplus, then our rate should be lowered. What happened to the grant money given to Mo Park? So, I took offense to how the Battery Burning Committee was treated tonight. So, we've not tested for dioxins at this site. You're only going to give them five hours at $300 per hour, so that's roughly $1,500 in attorney fees. So, I do believe that we were paying about, not correct on this completely, but maybe about $1,400 for a flower pot that went in the middle of the road. We spent $15,000 and $17,000 to test the water. Who approved that? If we spent $30,000 for testing, then we should be able to spend about $30,000 on attorney fees. Oh, wow. Do any of you guys, we figured out that possibly five or six years of burning the batteries out at this location, do any of you guys think that this was safe? And I'll take, I'll take you guys' comments now. Do you think it was safe?
No, not at all.
Do you think it was safe?
No, that's why we stopped it, that's why we wrote a big order, trying to make sure that it never happens again.
To what extent?
I think my act more approved that.
That's why we stopped it.
Okay. And do you think it was safe? So, we deserve answers. The city cannot investigate itself. If you guys think it's safe, and you were asking, you're asking the committee members if they wear protective gear out there, I think that was so disrespectful.
Why do you think it was disrespectful?
Did you wear protective gear?
I've not been saying that it's dangerous to be out there.
So, you guys said it was safe, remember? The city came out, said water's safe, everything's safe.
We did, and it is.
I don't believe it. There's no way you can burn that stuff out there for six years and it not affect our community. You can't investigate yourself. You asked them, oh, did you wear protective gear out there? You also said that, did you look at the place?
I'm inspired.
How would you know if you let them take all the stuff out of there, what went wrong?
Thank you, Jeff.
So, the, as for the five hours limit, those are just the individual blocks of time that we're buying. Mr. Grimes knows, because he's been at the fire committee meetings, when I discussed this with the committee, that we would buy five blocks, or five-hour blocks at a time. Once they'd exhausted the five hours, they could then come, come to the committee, or right, come to the commission, explain to us what they used that time on, explain to us what they think that they could get out of purchasing more time, and we would then, on an ongoing basis, approve five-hour blocks at a time. And so, it wouldn't be limited to five hours total, it'd be just the first trunk. If they end up needing more, they are welcome to come up and ask for more, as was discussed during the fire committee meetings that Mr. Grimes was in attendance at. As for why I asked if the fire committee wore protective gear out at the location, I was very transparent with that. There's been a lot of discussion and allegations that that site is currently unsafe. I think it's obvious that the activity going on out there shouldn't have happened, that's why it stopped, and that's why we've done a lot of work to make sure that it doesn't happen again in the future. But as for whether or not the current site is currently unsafe and currently contaminated, we don't have any tests that show that it is. The fire committee has talked to several people for many hours, they've had many meetings, they've been meeting, they've been reading all kinds of documents, and I think that it speaks volumes to the city that they did not feel the need to wear protective gear when they walked out there, even though in theory, if all of those theories about how contaminated the site is, are true, they would have been putting their lives on the line. It has been discussed that the site was so contaminated that animals are dying, that there is an ongoing danger to the police officers and the firefighters that'll be using the training facility. There's a lot of families in the city who, they've got anxiety and stress as to whether or not that is, that is true. There's businesses looking to invest in the city and deciding, trying to figure out if whether or not that's true. And while we are still waiting on the fire committee's final report, I think as interim, our interim answer as to whether or not the danger out there is, should be taken seriously to the point of, we need to evacuate the site, turn it into a super fun site, I don't think that we've got any evidence of that, and I think that the fire committee going out there to visit, and to her without wearing protective equipment, shows that they did not take that risk seriously either.
You are being completely inappropriate.
Excuse me. Stay in your name.
Nancy Ruff, 208 North Downing.
Tone it down.
Chair, by the way, of the fire committee.
Thank you.
Perhaps we made a mistake in not wearing protective clothing out there. We already explained that to you, and you were trying to use this as a gotcha moment, and I think everybody can see what you're doing.
I'm being very transparent with what I'm saying.
You are being transparent. You are being very transparent.
Any other comments from citizens? I will ask for a motion to adjourn, then.
Please adjourn.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.